Okay Chair.
Great, thank you. Good evening, I am calling this public hearing to order at 6:05 PM. In accordance with the Massachusetts Wetland Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40 in the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code Ordinances, Chapter 7-1.4. The Boston Conservation Commission is holding this public hearing on April 5, 2023, to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's hearing will be followed by our regular meeting. In accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online to ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at CC@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle @BostonEnviron and using the hashtag #ConComHearing. For the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission, I'll call the role of staff and commissioners. Who's here for staff this evening?
Allison Brizius, Environment Department.
Elena Itamarri, Environment Department.
Christopher Edwards, Environment Department.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
John Sullivan.
Commissioner Long?
President.
Commissioner Condon?
Valentin Wengren, Mayor Chuck Parker.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Ian Herbst.
Fantastic. Okay, because of quorum issues this evening, we're going to shuffle the agenda around a little bit. So the first item that we'll be hearing is Notice of Intent for DEP File Number 0061919 and Boston File Number 2023-013. For this matter, because someone in my firm represents the proponent, I'm going to need to recuse myself, so I would entertain a motion to appoint Commissioner Herbst as acting chair for this hearing. Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I enthusiastically vote aye, thank you.
And who do we have here to present for the applicant?
Good evening, Matt Morrow, along with John Grunier, representing the applicant.
Okay, just a reminder that this is a continued hearing, so just you can provide us with updates from the last meeting, that would be great.
Okay, um, thank you very much. The commission asked for a couple of items from the last meeting. One was the Boston Water and Sewer Approval. That is currently underway, application has been made. To my knowledge, I have not received any indication that they have responded yet. The second item was the proposed wall. The commission expressed the desire to see it removed from the riverfront. And I don't know if the if you're able to show the revised plan that I had on the PowerPoint presentation.
That looks like it.
Okay, so essentially what we have done here is we've moved the wall out five feet. It is now out of the riverfront. It is still within waterfront, but out of the riverfront, and what we've done is we've expanded our original proposed restoration area was a little over 400 square feet. It's like 428, I believe. What we're doing now is we've expanded that restoration area to 1,023 square feet. We will use a metal mixed planting that should blend in quite well with the area that the commission reviewed with me at the last meeting, along with a staggered planting of elderberry and winter berry bushes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Allison, any comments from you on this item?
No additional comments.
Okay, before I go to commissioners, as a reminder to members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or oops. Or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at CC@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle @BostonEnviron and using the hashtag #ConComHearing. Commissioner Sullivan, any comments from you?
Yeah, real quick on Matt, the plans you have at the Water and Sewer reflect the moving of the wall, et cetera?
I do believe so.
They do. Yeah, these most recent plans are what was what was put into Boston Water and Sewer.
Okay, just curious, yeah, there's a little bit of a backlog getting those things done, but any order of conditions can be subject to Water and Sewer signing off, so that shouldn't be an issue. That's all I had, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Long?
No further questions.
Commissioner Condon?
Is there an existing wall?
Yes, there is. And so we're taking that existing wall out and moving it up five feet.
Okay, so that still is activity, but it's the activity, I understand you're saying you can't help.
Right, I mean essentially the overall impact would be zero. If anything, we'd be adding habitat to basically close off that section of the riverfront. And I know the commission has some restorative work going on a lot behind me that actually should blend in quite well with it.
Thank you, no further questions, Chair.
Okay. I don't have further questions either, I'll just note that I appreciate the moving the wall, that was I think is an improvement, and I actually was on site yesterday, I think, to view the stone wall that's going to be moved. Commissioner Condon, and it's actually very it will be minimally invasive, you wouldn't do this, but you could almost move it by hand, it's just stones that can be moved.
I see.
So I don't have any additional issues. We did have a conversation about, there's a lot of vines growing up on the trees, that that's some restoration that could be done in that area as well. Are there any questions? Has anybody raised their hand, Allison?
I'm not seeing any hands raised, checking nothing on Twitter and no additional comments in the email, so no.
Okay, and were there any issues with the special conditions?
Not that I'm on my end, yeah, not on my end, where they're on the representatives.
Looked like we got a nod, but it was okay.
No, I understand the only special condition would be, you know, obviously subject to us getting our approvals through Boston Water and Sewer, which are under Okay.
That would be part of it.
Yeah, that's okay.
I think then at this point, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Removed.
Just a second.
Second.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that's four to nothing, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
I'll be happy to turn it over to our Chair.
Great, thank you Commissioner Herbst. Okay, next item on the agenda is Notice of Intent for DEP File Number 0061929 and Boston File Number 2023-019 from LEC Environmental Consultants, Inc. On behalf of the Boston Parks and Recreation Department for the proposed implementation of Phase Two Site Improvements at Sharon Woods Urban Wild located at 1 Marston Street in Hyde Park. Resource area is 100-foot buffer to BVW. I'll note Commissioner Long, I believe you have to recuse yourself as you're an employee of Parks and Rec, correct?
Yes, for the record, I'm recusing myself.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Hi, it's Andrea Kendall from LEC. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
Great, perfect. Thanks for the time tonight. Been working with Paul Sutton from the Boston Parks and Recreation Department, along with Hatch, the landscape architect, who put together the plans. This project is implementation of Phase Two Site Improvements within the Sharon Woods Urban Wild property within the Hyde Park neighborhood. The locus on the right shows the entire parcel. Phase One Site Improvements occurred in 2018 within the southern portion of the site, and this current phase is within the northwest portion of the site adjacent to Sharon Street. Generally, it includes buffer zone restoration measures, as well as stormwater improvements and enhancements. Within this portion of the site, there's a number of construction debris, impervious surface, trash, yard waste, et cetera, that will be cleaned up. And as is typical in many places today, there's a number of invasive species, so that will be addressed as part of this project and then associated native plantings. And then if we can just go on to the next site, next slide, I'll show you. Generally, this is, the north is to the right, south is to the left, and then this is the really subset of the of the project area. Next slide, please. So this is the existing conditions of the site, the area to the plan south is the bordering vegetated wetland. There's the 100-foot buffer zone off of that. The light blue area is the current stormwater feature, and that little red line is where there's a drainage outfall that receives street drainage from Sharon Street through two or three catch basins there. Just a point of reference, this drainage outfall and construction of Sharon Street was, and then construction of the stormwater feature was done through an order of conditions issued back in 2000 for a private, I guess, developer who constructed the street and I guess did some other improvements. That stormwater feature was, was, I guess, approved for was located in an area that was identified as an isolated wetland, but with the existing order of conditions, and it was at a time when the commission didn't have their their ordinance, which protected IVWs. You know, there's an existing order of conditions that allow the conversion of this feature to function, to treat stormwater. So to the left, plan left by this existing trail, there's a number of roadway millings and other debris that effectively, and a bunch of invasive species that are growing within this corridor, that's a subject of this of this proposal. So next slide, please. Effectively, there are three areas of the project. The trailhead area is where that milling is, so that will be removed. The area, healthy new soil brought in, the area regraded to generally mimic what's out there today, and reseeded and replanted with a host of native species along the Sharon Street shoulder. Similarly, there's been accumulation of debris throughout the years, so that will be removed and slightly regraded. And then within the stormwater feature also with invasive species, that area will be slightly regraded and invasive species managed and a host of new planting suitable for that setting, wetland setting will be installed. There will be a new guardrail along that steep slope. Next slide, please. This shows the proposed regrading and the new guardrail adjacent to the stormwater feature. Erosion controls will be installed throughout the construction period, which is anticipated to start this September, and then all the plantings are proposed this later in the fall during the planting season. Next slide, please. This shows the proposed planting scheme, lists all the native plantings. So overall, this is a tremendous ecological benefit to the park. Certainly addresses climate resiliency by providing, you know, a good corridor for migrating animals that are best suited for this region and pollinator species, and it provides a host of food sources. All the plants have been designed to provide a net ecological benefit. That's it in a nutshell, happy to answer questions. What I will say is Paul Sutton has been meeting with the Boston Water and Sewer Commission. They will be, as part of the project, they're going to be, or I take that back, I don't know who's installing part of the, whether it's them or through this contract. Hoods will be installed within the existing catch spaces within the street that feed and this area. And they've committed to be doing inspections on at least annual basis of the catch basins. There is going to be, what I neglected to say, kind of a new improved drainage outfall. Currently, there's just some riprap dispersed in the general outfall area, but that's going to be cleaned up and improved to better mitigate any of the runoff.
Great, thank you Andrea. I noticed that Paul Sutton, our Urban Wild Manager, is on the line here. Paul, do you have anything you wanted to add?
I don't think so, just that we're really excited about this and we think of it as partly, you know, restoring the area to what it was the basin, the stormwater basin, to what it was originally designed to be, and then really doing a lot of restorative cleanup of construction debris when this property was previously private. So we're excited to move forward with this.
Great, thank you, and thank you for all the work you do for the urban wilds, the Parks Department writ large. Quick question, and Paul may be able to answer this as well. Several of the commissioners have been on little volunteer junkets, working on invasism plantings. Is that the plan here, we'd be using volunteers?
Yeah, I think for what we're proposing to do for this site is we're proposing to use existing staff, some newer staff members to really closely monitor this site and keep it in really good shape going well beyond the construction contract. But we'll definitely be recruiting our annual volunteers and the green team, the Southwest Boston CDC Green Team, Youth Green Team, they'll be helping out here too.
Fantastic, and I know from personal experience, your training of volunteers is very comprehensive, so I guess that takes away one of my questions. I think they'll be in good hands if they go out there, they'll know what to do. Okay, thank you. Allison, do you have anything on this?
Yeah, I just had one item, which was that the application notes that chemical treatments may be used where appropriate. I think prior to construction, we might just want a little bit more detail on the proposed use of chemical treatments.
Fair enough.
Okay, good. Before I go on, just sort of remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at CC@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle @BostonEnviron using the hashtag #ConComHearing. Commissioner Sullivan?
Hey, you mentioned the guardrail along where the stormwater feature would be. Is there any other berm or anything to keep somebody from backing a truck up and dumping debris? Or is it just kind of open?
Andrea, do you want to take this?
Yeah, I mean, there are no other barriers, my understanding. So, I mean, I would I guess that's something that could happen. I live in Worcester, and that's certainly a problem that we see on more the quiet streets where there are open space areas. I guess my hope is, in a residential setting, that this would be curtailed to some degree, but you know, there's technically nothing that could stop it.
All right, it was just a question. And the other question I had, maybe Allison knows it, under the order of conditions, when this private drainage system was put in servicing the private roadway, does it require the builder or the owners of those properties to maintain the drain system, do you know?
Chair, our default order of conditions asks for the maintenance, the perpetual maintenance of any stormwater on the property or within the project, if that's what you're
Right, but that's a Sharon Street, there is a private roadway. And therefore, the maintenance of the catch spaces, et cetera, falls onto the owners of the private roadway, which turns out to be split between the Parks Department, I guess, and the homeowners on the other side. And I'm just curious, I know staff has been working with Paul and getting, you know, hoods on and make sure it's going to be built right this time. But I'm looking like five years out. Who's going to take care of this? It's just a question. So Paul says he's got information.
Yes, so that's correct. The homeowners are responsible for the maintenance of the roadway under the deeds and the development agreements, and technically the maintenance of the outfall as well. So that, and that is mentioned in the order of conditions. Regardless, we have to take care of the ConCom property, so we're going to do everything we can to restore some of the damage that has happened there corrected, and we will, park staff will certainly stay on top of this, the maintenance of everything on the BCC parcel. The roadway, again, the residents are responsible for water and sewer, has indicated that they've done yearly cleaning of the catch basin, so we, we, we hope that that would continue.
Okay, it's just tough that if nothing happens, the water sewer can clean it, but when it breaks or whatever, it gets difficult. I'm not trying to lean in on the Parks Department, but it's just, it's a no man's land here. I was just curious when the original developer, the original building owners, is that order of conditions, the original one, applied to them, do they know it? That's something, maybe you can follow up Allison on that.
Sure. Yeah.
Okay, that's all I had.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Condon?
Thank you Chair Parker. This looks like an exciting project, can't wait to visit once it's done. Just curious to understand, I think Paul may have already answered, this is a confirmation, that the construction debris, is that something that was there from before? Or is there new debris being brought there?
I think some of the debris was from, I would say, poor installation, poor construction, kind of sloppy sloppy work. But then a larger part of it was from, I would say, degradation through yard waste dumping, a lot of yard waste dumping and some random construction debris. Typically, when we've restored these areas and really stayed on top of them, we, those kind of dumping, illegal dumping issues seem to diminish, so we've seen that on other parts of the property at least.
So the hope is, when there is no obvious sign of negligence or maybe more obvious sign of care, the abuse will go down?
Absolutely, and the guardrail, we're hoping to put up an interpretive sign there that can explain the values of that outfall in the restoration. Actually, we memorialize the restoration, the work that's being proposed in writing and graphics.
Right, yeah, I think the signet will help, some education there is a good idea. Just also want to understand very quickly, there's stormwater coming from outside into the space? Is that correct?
The roadway runoff from Sharon Street
Yep.
is, goes into two or three catch basins, and that, those catch basins discharge through a pipe onto the Urban Wild's property.
Do we know how the space fared in rainstorms, like serious rainstorms?
I think that's the challenge with these private streets. The perpetual maintenance, like Commissioner Sullivan had indicated, and I think it's something to consider in any kind of future development of having the developer and the future homeowners responsible for maintenance on such an important thing as a roadway or stormwater infrastructure that then in turn drains into a city asset.
So the solution, Paul, is what? Sorry.
I think it's a challenge with the private roadways. I know there have been votes put before the residents to potentially turn the street into a public street, but those have not been, residents didn't vote in favor of that. And I think you see it all over the city, the private streets, the condition of them is quite poor, and I think I think it's a challenge, but all the deeds with those homes on the houses do indicate clearly responsibility for maintenance of the roadway and the outfall.
So, yeah, I guess my takeaway is it could be subject to serious flooding, and then we'll have to watch what happens and respond accordingly. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, and to that point, just to clarify a little bit, yeah, private roadways are definitely challenging owners onto midline or centerline, and whether they have it in their deed or not, there is a responsibility to maintain private ways. So I would imagine at some point, Paul, if you find it necessary, you know, legal team might want to contact homeowners and maybe enter into an MOU or something like that. You know, and part of the problem is it's going to be voluntary upon the homeowners. Seen litigation like this before, where I think maybe the city could enforce those private deed restrictions or requirements, but probably not. It would take one of the homeowners, I think, to initiate litigation against the other homeowners to take care of the private way because they have standing. It gets a little complicated, so I'm sure that's the challenge that you face, but you know, I think outreach to the homeowners, once you get the property improved, you might find that they'll voluntarily cooperate. Commissioner Herbst?
No questions, I'm also excited about the project, and I'll be down there regularly checking it out to see your progress. I also am thinking, at least on the yard waste, maybe that's something either the green team or your team could do some good neighbor outreach for. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Okay, any comments from the public? I saw a lot of comments about roadway maintenance, I think we covered that. Anything else?
Yes, those comments about roadway maintenance, and then there's a new question in the chat about winter road treatment as well. I don't know if Linda or Ms. Friedman wants to unmute and ask that question.
Hi, thank you. The concern is, you know, you have road salt is what I'm referring to, with the winter road treatment for winter storms. And how does that impact the stormwater runoff? Over time, you know, from season, from every winter season to season. Because it doesn't just, even though you may have some form of street cleaning, it still goes into stormwater runoff once it starts thawing and melting. It has to go somewhere. It it has to go somewhere.
Right.
And how does that impact? The rest of the environment. That's the, you know, right there.
Okay.
Restoration.
Right. Who's responsible for the street uh s- snow removal now? Do you know, Paul?
I am, I am not sure. I imagine the, even though it's private, I imagine that public works in heavy snow events comes and plows the street.
Okay. Yeah, but what it is in that uh it's a private way, open to public travel. And the public works, although they won't maintain the roadway, will in fact plow it for emergency access, etc. So they they do it and they also sand it soft.
Okay. So Ms. Freeman, we have the uh city's snowplow or snow removal um techniques uh and procedures and protocols that we have. Um Allison, can you um? Can you shed anything else on that? I think we probably have that in our files.
We we do have that in our files and and I can provide it. We also um for this part of the project, that we do have a maintenance condition on the the uh snow management plan for the the sidewalk and the and the actual urban wild itself.
Fantastic. Good. Thank you. Uh anything else from the public?
Sure, we have another question um from Suzanne Mizzard. Uh apologies for the pronunciation if that's incorrect. I can read it or you can unmute and and ask your question, whichever you prefer.
Can read it, thank you.
Okay, says I am a homeowner on Sharon Street and I'm confused as to what you're implying this project might cost me.
Who is that directed to? The homeowners that for for maintenance? Um is that what you're asking?
You started to talk about a uh going into some kind of memorandum agreement with. I mean, I'm starting to get nervous.
Yeah.
I know the last time, I've lived here for about twenty four years and twice it's been proposed that we pay for the street to be repaired. The first time it was going to be ten thousand and I think the second time it was going to be like thirty thousand a household. And so now, when you're talking about us having to pay things, I'm starting to get nervous.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to make you nervous. Um my observation was only that it's a private way and generally um the maintenance of private ways is controlled by either an agreement between the owners or um just by virtue of them owning a portion of the private way. And my suggestion was that at some point, if there is an issue um that maybe parks would reach out, talk to the homeowners and come to an agreement that, you know, we're going to take care of that. Um you know, stormwater drain over there. Um but I'm not suggesting anything like capital improvements. Um you know, that's um as Commissioner Sullivan just mentioned, that's that's really going to be up to the homeowners. In other words, there's nothing we can do to force that issue one way or the other.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about the uh confusion there. Okay, anyone else from the public?
We have a final question in the chat. Will the restored area be a part of a regular maintenance plan by parks?
We we anticipate that that'll be a con- condition. Uh if the commission approves the project, that that would be a condition regardless if there's a condition that'll be part of our regular uh ongoing maintenance of the the site. Uh remember, this site was privately owned and now we're just restoring a lot of the previous damage, so we will assume responsibility for maintenance as part of our regular protocol.
And and sorry, for the record, that was Mr. Louis Aliza.
Great, thank you. Okay, um so with that, um I would entertain a motion to close the hearing. Allison, are there any um special conditions here that we have to add to this motion? I don't think so, right?
Um only if we want to see the additional chemical information.
Oh, right. Yeah.
But I don't think that would be an issue, I think. Ah, I believe Paul was comfortable with that. Was that right, Paul?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, so with that, I'd entertain a motion to um close the hearing.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Hi.
Commissioner Connan?
Hi.
Commissioner Herbst?
Hi.
And I vote aye, so that passes four nothing. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Okay, Commissioner Connan, um do you want to hang on until um you have what, another fifteen, twenty minutes?
Yes.
Do you want to hang on or do you want to make a clean break before this hearing?
Hang on, that's okay.
Okay, that's absolutely fine with me. Okay, uh we'll go back to the top of the agenda and thank you for uh the patience uh from the um original um proponents for slots one and two here, so uh notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six one nine three two and Boston file number twenty twenty three dash zero two zero from Environmental Health and Engineering, Inc. On behalf of the Hebrew Rehabilitation Center for Parking Lot Repairs and Ongoing and Landscape Maintenance Located twelve hundred twelve hundred Center Street in Rosendale, Mass. Resource areas are riverfront area, waterfront area and bordering land subject to flooding. This was continued from the March fifteenth uh twenty twenty three hearing. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Hi, I am Megan Fiorella with uh Environmental Health and Engineering, our E H and E. Um and I also have uh Bill Doyle here, our engineer. And we are just following up on a couple of questions that we had on the last um meeting. Um Bill will talk a little bit more about the storm filters that are added to the plans. Um we added a little more text to the signage around the river. We added the a little detail about Charles River watershed and not dumping. Um we didn't go want to go overboard on text, but um you know, we can discuss that, but we want to make sure it's something that people will read. And we also looked into the um snow melt um substances that are being used. Um it turns out what they have, what they have been using is uh calcium chloride liquid that's added to regular rock salt and that's supposed to, the ideas to make it uh the the product says that it'll use a lot less volume and that it'll sort of migrate less. Um they did a price comparison for using pure calcium chloride or pure magnesium chloride, and that was much more expensive than the current um um products. So I have sent some cut sheets and some details about that over, but that was just today. Um. And then we also added a little language into the landscaping plans about um a backfilling with existing soil when they're taking out, you know, um uh invasive plants with roots that go really deep. Um Bill, do you want to talk about the the updated plans here a little bit?
Um yeah, I mean, uh the we can't really zoom in or anything, but uh the 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 big question, the big discussion that came up last time was to provide uh more additional uh treatment more than just deep sump catch basins, which is what we had provide provided in the initial time. Um and the idea was to provide more phosphorus, phosphorus removal through more of a cartridge system and um I think Mr. Sullivan pointed out the uh the jellyfish system. Uh we looked at that, um we ended up showing on the plans, the the Kraken, which is uh is by the same company. Um but just trying to retrofit into the existing pipes, uh the jellyfish, you know, from rim to invert uh had a had a higher number, which would uh larger number, which would have required us to basically pull up all the pipes and set them lower. Um which we didn't think that was a a a great idea, so we used one of their other products. Again, it's a cartridge filtration system um that that does that phosphorus removal, uh but it just has a lower uh a lower head elevation, if you will, between the um between the catch basin rim and the um and the invert of the pipe. And it seems to be able to fit in with the existing pipe outfalls that we have there today. So really, that's all it was. It's just what, you know, swapping out of uh the the deep sump catch basins for not the jellyfish, but for the Kraken with a K, uh you know, by the same company, but just a different filter cartridge that allows for a little tighter of a elevation there.
There's actually a little more detail on that if you advance the slides to.
Yeah, okay, so you pulled it out, yeah. Uh oh, that was it, yeah. So it's so in in in, you know, that's it's their proprietary product here, but you have that storm filter cartridge on the left hand side. It's a, this is a a unit created and, you know, shipped by the contact people, same people that that do the jellyfish. Um and that that storm filter cartridge is again, you know, a a a phosphorus removal cartridge. But you see there's a twenty on the on the right hand side, that twenty eight inches from, you know, from frame to to invert, that's really the number we were trying to get to and the the jellyfish just had a a higher number and we couldn't, we couldn't we would have had to re relay all the pipes and and new outfalls and everything. Uh we thought that would have been kind of majorly invasive. Um so uh yeah, I mean, that's the product uh that seems to be doing, it seems to want to do what we want want to do there as far as as far as filtering that water a little bit better.
Okay. Hey, Bill, um what about changing out the filters? How often does that happen? How can we assure it will happen?
Um well, we we do add it to the operation of maintenance and there is, you know, the um the you 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 check it out and and if there is a lot of phosphorus in the parking lot, then it will need to be filled, you know, take checked out uh or or swapped out more often. Uh but the operation of maintenance from the contact people kind of spells out that that needs to be done and how it needs to be done. As far as, you know, the um the 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 Hebrew Rehabilitation Center kind of keeping up with that, that'll be, you know, in obviously in your guys' order of conditions, it is identified in the operation and maintenance plan that we provided. Um and there are the, you know, the 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 sheets that they need to fill out and say, you know, we did this. Um so it'll it 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 the the paperwork is there and the process is there. Um assuring that it happens is it's it's um on my conservation commission in Wellfam, which is a bit of a city. It's that's always the toughest thing is policing these things to make sure they do happen. Um but I do feel that the the group out there is is uh it really wants to do the right thing here and they've been, you know, maintaining from from for for years past. And they have a lot of new requirements now that they're they're becoming aware of that uh hopefully they'll be able to keep up with it in the future.
Okay, cause I think we'd want to see in the order of conditions, um some sort of paper trail that uh we can check on that when uh conservation agent has a little time, they could visit the office and look at the paperwork to make sure the filters have been changed out.
Yeah, and I I I think that's uh the appropriate thing to put in the in perpetuity into the uh, you know, into the conditions. It's the typical thing that we do as well.
Okay, great, thank you. And uh thanks for your service in Wellfam. So thank you.
Uh it's thankless, but I but I I love getting out there once in a while and getting dirty and and trying to find out that solution to that problem out there, but I guess that's why I'm an engineer.
Yeah, we do too. Thank you. Okay, um before we go to uh staff comments and commissioners, want to remind members of the public to provide public comment. Please your raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle at Boston and Byron using the hashtag ConcomHearing. Allison, what do you have on this?
I don't have any additional questions, just if anyone useful, I'm happy to recap proposed conditions that have come across the last three hearings.
Okay. Do you want me to go ahead and do that or um did you want to do that?
Oh.
I can do it, you know what, I can do it in a motion.
Sounds good.
Discuss these, so, okay. Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, Bill, you said you were going to put in deep some catch basins, the ones with the hoods and all, and put this unit in?
No, no. I'm sorry.
Right.
Uh originally, originally, that's what we had proposed, because right now there's nothing. There's just, you know, uh they're kind of rickety old cement block parched up, you know, catch basin inlets, you know, twenty four inches by twenty four inches and and you know, I don't even know if there's a bottom in them or they're just filled up with garbage. Um a- a- and what we were originally proposing was an improvement to that would be the deep sump catch basin. Uh so we had, you know, a modified deep sump catch basin, because we do have that tight to the, you know, pipe to invert, uh rim to invert uh dimension. Um and then your comment at the at the last hearing that we were at was to to see if we could put in the jellyfish and and like I kind of you know, talked about, we we looked at that, but that rim to invert was was too much, so we we worked with the uh the Kraken product. Um so it what we're proposing right now, and there's only three inlets, three catch basin inlets in the parking lot. Um so we're just calling those instead of instead of the deep some catch bases that we originally proposed, we're proposing the um the uh the contact that you saw in that detail.
Yeah, so it would the only thing that confuses me is you're gonna have to upgrade anyway, because they're small catch spaces to begin with.
Yeah.
Um the unit you're proposing takes care of phosphorus. What takes care of the suspended solids? Or is the maintenance plan such that you'll be cleaning these things a lot more frequently? Because there is no deep sump to capture the.
Yeah, there is kind of that that little that there is a sump, but it's not like that twenty four in, you know, the forty eight inch uh uh
Right.
Four foot deep sump. Um so yeah, there will be uh there will be a lot more uh cleaning of it. Um.
Does your stormwater manual call for a lot more cleaning of it or a lot more at least checking it?
It calls for the checking of it. I think we uh it was, you know, we typically did the two two twice a year and then I up this one to the four times a year to check it. Um and certainly, you know, look at what it would mean to, you know, every time they're out there mowing the lawn, uh you know, once a week type thing. Um because it's a quick check to see.
Right, no, if it's four times a year, that's that's a problem.
Yeah, I think that's what I put in there for this. But we can, we I I will, you know, if we want to make that a condition, I can definitely make sure that we did that.
Yeah, well, the stormwater manual has it that they have to follow. The condition be the all their own stormwater manual. The I I just bring that up. The other thing is that eventually the EPA has now um across across the city have has a residual designation authority. So they will be coming for any property, one acre or larger, and making them get their own N P D S permit, and it'll be a lot more stringent than these units, so. You know, stay tuned. A lot more on EPA will will help share the burden of permits with you.
Yeah, yeah, N P D S is is getting uh, I don't want to say tougher, more uh more stringent, more stringent, so that's good.
I'm all set.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Sullivan. Uh Commissioner Long?
Uh nothing new, just wanted to thank you for looking into the salt alternatives and uh looking into what you can do when you approve plants. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Connan?
Thank you, Chair Parker. How does, how how do you make sure all the water does go through the filter?
The uh the the catch basins end up being at the low points. I mean, that's where the water will will end up. Um it, the system is designed so that it has the path that goes through it for the, you know, the first flush storm events and uh you know, they have a nice little graphic on their website and how the water flows through it. Um but yeah, I mean, it ends up being about grading and and you know, hopefully when we do the uh, when we do do that, because this is ultimately is a paving project. Um we'll we'll just have to make sure that, you know, they pitch everything to the drains. It pitches now to the drains, so this really is kind of a a grind and overlay project. Uh so we'll just make sure that they continue to pitch to the drains, yeah.
If anything changes, then the water can't go through the filter, right? Is that also like in the regular maintenance and in like oversight, is that included to kind of make sure that the landscaping stays as intended?
Uh the landscaping uh on one end of the, actually, it doesn't really change. We just add, we add plantings uh up and down the river. One of the thing up and down the stream. One of the things we did do, though, uh at the edge of the stream that doesn't exist today uh is added a added a berm, added a ca- catch, a um berm, a curb curbing. Uh that has been consistent through the throughout the whole project. That's not something new. We we uh the water doesn't, in most cases, it doesn't flow from the parking lot directly into the river. Now it is pitched back to the catch basins. But we did put that curbing there to, uh obviously, it'll make sure that that can keeps the water in the parking lot and keeps it going through the system. Um but it's also intended to be kind of a visual and a structural uh barrier for plows to you know, plows, they can plow up over anything almost uh all the time, but what what we're hoping that it 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 does is provide an edge, a visible edge that will keep uh keep the plows riding along it and pushing the snow to where to where we want it. Um but to answer your question, it's the grading. Grading will do ninety nine percent of the job of getting the um the water to the catch basins, uh and the curbing will, you know, provide a belt and suspenders, if you will.
Great, thank you. Just that my last question, is there any way to test the filter when they're removed to see how much phosphorus they are capturing?
I know they've done that in the piloting products, pro- uh projects uh of these to see their efficiencies. Um I I don't know, I I'm sure there is, uh you know, to see how to see how well they're working. Um I I I haven't delved into that process myself, um but I'm sure there is a way to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Herbst?
Uh no questions, thank you.
Okay, great. Uh Allison, anybody from the public?
I don't see anyone, no.
Okay, so that I would entertain a motion to um close the hearing with special conditions that we discussed in prior hearings uh regarding signage, uh alternative deicers like magnesium chloride or calcium chloride. Um we do have the Um, we do have the, uh, Kraken, uh, as our solution and also that will have, um, uh, a paper trail, uh, regular maintenance, um, um, reports, uh, on site regarding the, uh, change out of the filters and, uh, also suspended solids, uh, um, pursuant to, uh, Commissioner Sullivan. Ornamental plannings proposed as optional would be required. And, uh, the condition that we, um, uh, we talked about requiring acknowledgement of the resource areas and their protection and responsibilities, uh, by new staff.
And excuse me for the interruption here. We do have a hand up after.
Okay, great. Let's take the hand.
George Marsh?
Yes. Hello, Commissioners. Uh, I'm a neighbor of Hebrew Senior Life Facility. Uh, been there uh, many times, uh, for programs in the past and very familiar with the brook as it runs right through the property. I was not at the previous meeting when you discussed this, so, um, I'm just sort of catching up on this. I will not repeat that. Thank you for the information that I've just heard. Um, my primary concern is just about the ongoing maintenance of the property in adjacent to the brook. Um, with a very sensitive resource running directly through the property, which is a very heavily used property, as I'm sure you're all aware. And, uh, with vehicles traveling back and forth across it all the time. Um, my concerns about, yeah, how the snow is, is, um, removed in this, in the winter time. I heard some of that was, was, uh, responded to. Uh, but one thing that I, since I wasn't on the previous, um, meeting in terms of just the ongoing maintenance, and that's not strictly part of the repaving project, but since there is a maintenance schedule as part of the notification, um, in the, in, in the past, I've noticed particularly during the primary growing season, um, that the ongoing maintenance includes, uh, cutting, trimming vegetation down along the banks of the brook and including into the actual brook itself, which I question. Um, and you know, it's not a lawn. It's, it, it directly it butts the lawn on the upper parking lot, the small parking lot for visitor parking. Um, which I'm very familiar with because I parked there many times myself. And the lawn that's up there, the grass, uh, extends to the top of the bank and the maintenance crew seemed to just go down and cut off all of the vegetation that grows up within the stream channel itself, which I very much question if they should be doing that. And I just didn't know whether the commission had discussed that previously or not. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Uh, yes, I believe we had discussed that. Um, Allison, can you, in case I misstate that, uh, is your memory any better? I think that, um, we spent a good amount of time talking about the, uh, maintenance of the, um, resource area in the buffer zone.
Um, yes, we, we did talk about that and, and some elements that you just referenced in the conditions included, uh, notices. Um, an awareness for the staff about the resource area to make sure that the maintenance staff were aware of the sensitivity of the resource area and were trained on it as well as additional signage in the space.
Great. Thank you. Okay. So I, uh, put a motion, motion out to the floor. Do I have any takers?
Uh, so moved.
We have a second? Great. Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that carries five to nothing. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Condon, is this the time you have to excuse yourself?
Yep. Thank you, Chair Parker.
Thank you. So please let the record, uh, reflect that Commissioner Condon has left and we're down to Commissioner Sullivan, Long, Herbst and myself. Okay. Next item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP file number 0061931 and Boston file number 2023-014 from Niche Engineering Inc. On behalf of the Brook Charter School for the proposed construction of a new community field, walkway, restroom building, seating, storage area and driveway located at 550 Morton Street in Matapan. Resource areas are riverfront area, waterfront area, bordering vegetated wetlands, isolated land subject to flooding, uh, land underwater inland bank, 100 foot buffer to, uh, BVW and 100 foot buffer zone to inland bank. This has been continued from the March 15th, 2023 hearing. And, uh, who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Hi, I can start us off. My name is Mark Loring. I'm the chief operating officer for Brook Charter School. Thank you so much to the commission for having us here tonight. Uh, I'll be speaking on behalf of Brook, uh, and with me is, uh, John Schmidt, Chris Hodney, uh, both from Mitch, who represent the engineers on the project, and then also, uh, Ty Johnson from Warner Larson, who represents the landscape architect for the project.
Okay.
The next slide. Uh, just to remind the commission of the project we're speaking of is at the corner of Morton Street and American Legion Highway. Uh, it is currently, uh, previously, uh, well, I'm sorry, it's part of the state hospital site development. Uh, and it's, uh, envisioned to be an open space and active recreation, uh, site, uh, which includes a soccer field, inlaid softball field as well as walking paths, passive recreation, uh, seating and gathering areas, uh, extended sidewalk that actually goes down to connect with existing sidewalk in, in part of, uh, um, Morton Street where no sidewalk currently exists, as well as a restroom facility, um, some storage, uh, pods for, for equipment maintenance, uh, in emergency access kind of drive. Um, the, the site, it is. Uh, well, again, I won't go too much in because I know we, we presented all this last time. So we can go to the next slide to the questions that were brought up last time by the commission. Um, it, the, one of the questions that was brought up was questions about kind of the, uh, the trees and the canopy. And for this, I'll pass it on to my colleague, Ty Johnson from Warner Larson.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Mark. Um, so there were, we're coming back today with some additional information for you, um, based on some of the feedback we received last week. Um, uh, right off the bat, I just, I just wanted to, uh, address the concerns about the, the tree report that was prepared. It was prepared by a certified arborist. Um, our little tree experts are well known in the area. Um, that tree report, uh, with the recommendations for those trees was sent to the commission. Um, we also just want to make a note that the arborist was doing this report, uh, without any awareness of the, um, proposed design. Um, they were looking at each individual tree, um, assessing each, the condition of each tree. Um, and what I want to do is, uh, we, we prepared a couple of new, uh, graphics to better understand of what, what is happening with these existing trees as a result of, of the design and, and what we are proposing. Um, now let me just start out by saying that the, within the hundred foot, uh, setback of the resource areas, there will be 15 trees removed total. Um, 14 of those trees, or sorry, excuse me, four of those trees are part of the sidewalk extension that goes 400 feet to the south. Um, those are within the eight, within basically within eight, 10 feet of the curb. And in order to build a sidewalk to the mass DOT requirements, um, those trees will need to be removed. So those are four, that leaves 11 left within the, the site of the field itself. And I, I'm going to show you those, each, each one individually. Um, and the numbers below that, uh, so we are proposing 27 new trees within the hundred foot setback of the resource area. And I'm going to show those in the next graphic as well. Um, and then just to summarize, there were 209 trees in that overall report. Um, of those 209, 74% were considered healthy. So in fair or better condition, not dead and not poor. Um, and we are removing 73 total trees, but of, but only 43 that are considered healthy trees. We are proposing 84 trees, um, which are going to be full size nursery stock, two and a half inch caliper, up to three and a half inch caliper, as well as white pines. Uh, we have 20 to 30 different species, all native. Um, and we, in addition to that, we are proposing, uh, a forestation area, we're calling it. It's along the slope between, uh, Olmstead Green and the field. And those 31 saplings, which are three quarter inch to one inch caliper native trees, uh, are intended to re-vegetate and naturalize that slope. And I'll show you on the plan where that, where that area is. Um, so in the end, ultimately we have, uh, increase in total trees after the project is complete. Um, next slide, please. Uh, so this graphic shows you the limit of work in blue, which is the dash blue line. The orange represents a hundred foot setback line. And in, uh, the purple pink color, you can see the, the location of the field, um, the, the rectangle essentially, how that fits in here. Um, and we spent quite some time trying to fit that rectangle in the best location it can go, maximizing tree preservation on this site. The little red Xs represent the trees are being removed. Obviously, if it's, if it's inside that orange line and has a red X that represent a tree within the hundred foot setback to be removed. And that, uh, list is in its entirety on, on this slide as well. Those are the 15 trees that'll be removed. Um, like I said, four of those are actually off this page down, down the street within a 400 feet to the south on the, right on the page. Um, and then the rest are, the vast majority of them are where we're proposing our, our emergency access, um, on that bottom right of the slide. And, uh, at least one of them is in poor condition. Um, and that one is, uh, all represented off, off the page, uh, down to the right on Morton Street. Uh, the next slide, please. Uh, so this is the proposed trees. We've outlined those with the green lines. Uh, most of the proposed trees have the plus sign in them. Um, and these are the 84 trees, uh, plus 31 trees. So you're seeing rough, what, 135? Did I do the number, the math right? 120? 100 and, uh, 200, 115 trees total. So, uh, the top corner, um, on, on the page, uh, is our reforestation area. Um, that's not to say the rest of the area won't be naturalized as well, but that's where those saplings were focused, which is above that black line that kind of cuts at a diagonal, but below the blue dash line, there's 31 trees in there. Um, the rest you could see within the buffer zone on the left side is the majority of the trees we're proposing within the hundred foot setback are over on that side. That's really the area that we're going to naturalize and have a proposed sidewalk or walkway going through there with benches and so forth. Um, and then the drop off area, which is on the bottom right, and I, we have a blow up of that to show there's two new trees in there. Um, there's really not a lot of space in there. I mean, we're really trying to minimize impact. So there's really not very little space to actually plant new stuff in there, but we do have the two trees in there. Um, so if you go to the next slide. Um, yeah, so this is the, the zoomed in area of our, our pull off area, um, for emergency vehicles. Um, and you can see here the, the, um, the wetland buffer line, it's a little bit lighter on here, but that's in orange. The farthest one out is 100 feet. And then there's two more orange lines, uh, 50 feet and 25 feet setback.
Good time. Ty, I'd like to speak to this.
Please. Yeah, John.
So at the, at the previous hearing, uh, Commissioner Harris, uh, had some questions regarding our proposed emergency pull up area. So the, the area is, uh, will be gated, um, and restricted only to emergency personnel or possibly, uh, material deliveries for the field. Um, the driveway itself, we, we originally proposed it as a, uh, gravel pavement. I'm sorry, yeah, a gravel, a gravel pavement with porous grid reinforcement. So it's a gravel service that allows infiltration. But we're also, um, proposing if the commission feels that this is a, a better, uh, better idea is we could, instead of going with gravel, we could have a grass surface with, um, a porous grid reinforcement. Both of them allow vehicle access. You know, the green might, the, the grass might better, um, serve this use. But I also like to talk about that we are outside, completely outside the 25 foot riverfront area. And along the edge of that riverfront area, we're going to have a four foot wide black vinyl fence. This will protect the riverfront area from any trash or anything that might be blown or whatever possibly could happen there. Um, the, and there was some concern about work within the waterfront area. That's the area from the 25 foot riverfront, another additional 25 feet. So the portion of this, of this drop off, uh, impervious drop off area, it were impacted 437 square feet of that area, which, you know, is fairly, in my mind, is fairly minimal. Uh, we also looked at removing, you know, if we, we need to, to turn around here because we are in Morton Street and if emergency vehicles come in or delivery vehicles come in, it'd be an unsafe condition for them to try to back out into Morton Street, um, when, you know, when they need to exit the property. Um, and, and again, uh, this is a seasonal use, so there won't be any salting or anything like that to this, to this driveway area. You know, if there's snow on the ground, if there's ice on the ground, it's just going to rest there. If, if the field, if there's snow on the ground, they're not going to be using the field. Nor would they have to open the gates for, for, for access purposes. So I hope that we've, uh, adequately addressed, um, the concerns of the commission and we look forward to your feedback. If there is a preference between the gravel or the grass, of course, grid reinforced, um, access. And I now I'll turn it back to Ty to discuss, um, the field itself.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Um, yeah, the next slide is our last slide and we just wanted to mention that, um, we, we forwarded through, um, all the, the information, uh, we had, uh, for, um, the turf products that we plan on using. Um, the various information that we received from vendors regarding, um, no PFAS content, uh, the testing that's been done on, uh, lead and so forth. And I just want to mention, and also the specification that will be used on this project, uh, which has very specific requirements, uh, for the project, and that's actually included in the draft order of conditions, um, that full, full PFAS testing is done, um, as well as other testing, uh, which would all be as part of this project. We actually have the materials themselves tested, not just the, the materials that come off the factory line for this project would be tested for these items. Um, and just to, just to mention again, the, the natural infill that we are proposing, it is, uh, it's made of southern yellow pine. It's a hydrophilic, uh, material. In other words, the water, uh, is held in, in the pine particles, uh, after a rain event. And, um, so it does have a cooling effect essentially because of that versus, uh, chrome rubber, the, the SPR chrome rubber, which we know has, um, has larger heat issues. So I just wanted to mention that as well. Um, but these are all the products that would be also were, uh, submitted and specified for the East Boston project, uh, which were approved. Um, I think with that, I'd like to turn it back over to the commission.
I'll, I'll jump in real quick. I'm sorry. I just, another thing the commissioner brought before was the, uh, question, the article 97 protection on the sites. Uh, we've made progress on that with, uh, Parks Department, the EA, um, BPDA, I believe Conservation Commission, um, legal as well. If there are any questions, particularly about kind of where that stands, um, the attorney who has been spearheading this across all departments on behalf of the, the development, Paul Mottney is, is here as well and can answer questions, uh, as it relates to the article 97 protection. Uh, Paul, I don't know if you just want to give a quick overview of where we stand with that, if that's helpful for the commission.
Yeah, I think, I think we're all set for now, Mark. We might, we might come back to that later. Um, I think we talked about as a, um, special condition that, uh, there'd have to be a CR for some sort of protection mechanism in place before construction. Uh, so if we get to that line of questioning, we'll, we'll go to your attorney. Um, okay. Thank you. So just want to, uh, quickly, uh, lay out the format of the hearing here. Um, a lot of the members of the public have been with us before, but, um, what we do is I will now go to staff and fellow commissioners for their comments. Then we open it up to public, public comment. Um, excuse me, I just want to note, um, that we've received comments from the following residents in support of the application. Allison Friedman, Arlene Calderon, um, Christie McGrath, Ebony Milton, Edgar Varela, Leighton Morgan, Yulisa Mejia, Karen James Duncan, Katura Joseph, LaShonda Gaden, Latisha Perez, Lorene, I'm sorry, Lorraine Ruiz, Maria de Vago Edhart, um, Marie Paul Rock, uh, Mary Ann Chiu Wu, or Chuck Wu, I'm sorry, Michelle Porter, uh, Nihav Barrows, Adesah Jesus, uh, Richard James, Robert Mendez and Winsome Wilk- Wilkinson. Uh, comment letters in opposition, uh, were submitted from Alana Feaster on behalf of the Morton Street 10 Residence Group. Corey Champagne, uh, Kyla Bennett, uh, from Pier, Jessica and Darren Spruell. Jessica and Darren Spruell. Letters that we had on file prior to the three fifteen hearing were from Dorothy uh, El Censor. Uh, Lisa Beatman and Rick Yoder, Mount Hope Canterbury Neighborhood Association, Louise Johnson. Mimi Turchewitz, uh, H. Parker James, Sarah Evans. Nancy Aleo, uh, Patricia Alvarez from the Southwest Boston CDC, Sarah Freeman. Uh, Vikash Mohanka from the Sierra Club, and we're also presented with a uh, change.org uh, petition. So um, just want to also uh, make clear, and we made this clear at our uh, other hearing. That um, we have consulted with DEP on the Conservation Commission's um, jurisdiction as it relates to PFAS. And uh, it's DEP's opinion that PFAS is considered a drinking water and a hazardous material regulated under MGLC. Uh, twenty-one E, also known as the Massachusetts Superfund Law. Uh, under the direct supervision of Mass DEP Drinking Water Program and the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. Um, the wetlands program at DEP does not consider PFAS to be a wetlands-related matter. Uh, because the WPA does not mention uh, PFAS. And uh, believes that PFAS is outside the purview of the commission and DEP on appeal. Um, they also furnished us with a uh, the um, administrative decision. From a uh, case uh, EIP Communications LLC. Uh, in Westford, uh, and in that matter, I'll just paraphrase quickly or just summarize it. Um, the um, uh, DEP upheld the um, order of conditions approving the work uh, for a. Similar type of turf field through an adjudicary, judicatory process. Um, finding that without citing a single and, single wetlands regulatory provision. Uh, that um, without any of those regulatory provisions regarding PFAS. Uh, the um, that it was uh, PFAS regulation was outside the jurisdiction of, in this case, the Westford Conservation Commission. Um, so with that, I would um. I would go to um. Allison, one quick question though, I guess it's for John. Um, Commissioner Herbst and I were out there on a very chilly Sunday, I think, a few weeks ago. Uh, and the um, emergency um, pull-off that you're referring to is the one that is um. Off of the highway there, down by the riverfront or down by the waterfront?
It's off, it's off of Morton Street. Yes, so part of the um, part of design. Will allow for a um, a, a, a drop-off lane for large buses. So the, the curb will be moved in about four feet. To allow for a drop-off lane. And just prior to that, we'll have a curb cut opening that MassDOT's approved that will allow emergency egress into. This uh, parking area.
And you said it was gated.
It will be gated, yes.
Okay, okay. Um, let me go to um, Allison first. What do you have on this?
Um, so sure, I would just add that we also really recently received an additional comment letter in support. From Tasha Bromwell in the inbox. And. Um, I think other than that, I would defer to the commissioners on this item.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, um, I guess this one would be for John Schvet or Chris. The, the pre and post runoff, you know, Canterbury Brook is subjected to flooding and all the time. It's got some problems just transporting it. Uh, currently, there is uh, when the water runs off there, it runs nice and slow, goes through wetlands, grass, et cetera. Now you're having a service, you are gonna be storing some water, but as I recall, all you ever mentioned was that you'll remove. Potentially sixty-two percent of the phosphorus, but we didn't know how much volume of water. Is going to go pre and post. So is there any increased? Volume of water hitting that brook. Because of the runoff from the surface.
Uh, give me a moment. If you want to go another question, I will look that up.
John, I've got it up. Um, so. No, so our stormwater report shows that there'd be a reduction for the two, five, ten, and hundred year storms in both. Uh, from the existing condition.
Okay, I just want to make sure you spoke that on the record. No, that would be fine. I just, I just wanted for the record. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Long?
Yeah, um. Only thing I have pertaining to the seed mix. I believe it's the restoration seed mix you specified in the waterfront area. By the emergency pull-off. Just wanting to make sure that that is maintained and is successful. And that um, there's at least some recruitment for those plants in that seed mix. So um. Want to have that on the record with you all. But that's all I have.
Was there a response to that?
Uh, noted, uh, thank you very much. Um, yeah, we would. Definitely be, uh, our office is involved during the construction of the project. Making sure that all the areas are. Seed areas are established. Um, and would be keeping an eye on that. That'd be requirement of the contractor, part of the specification.
Commissioner Long, anything else?
Um, I guess, yeah, how long? I think you may have mentioned this. How long do you anticipate the construction period? Being or um, uh, monitoring the seed mix success?
I would say that after. The, getting the seed established will be something that goes beyond substantial completion. So um, after. A project is open for business, we would require. You know, open for use. Uh, the seed mix would. Continue to be monitored by the contractor uh. Until we have full termination. Uh, money would, would be withheld from that contractor until, until that's. Until everything is fully germinated. Um, so usually that might last a couple months, maybe two or three months, depending. On how well it works, what time of year it is, really makes a difference as well. And then at that point, it would be turned over to the owner. Um, but if there was a problem, if, if we never received. If there was never a termination or establishment, then. Um, you know, they would have to rework the area, redo it um, as part of the contract.
Yeah, thank you. And I suppose if, if you see plants coming up that you don't want, um. Those would also, would those also fall under the scope of work for the contractor to remove any weeds that come up in a seeded area?
Yes, definitely. We would, we would look for weeds. If, if they come up, they would be required to remove them. During that maintenance period.
And do, do any of you know off the top of your head what the specification would be for the erosion control mat?
Uh, the, we've been using biodegradable erosion control mat. It's offered by North American Green is, is one of them. Um. So that would biodegrade over time. Uh, yeah, sure.
All right, thank you, Ty. That's all I have for you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Herbst, I'm sure you do a much better job of uh, questioning based on our site visits, so please go ahead.
Uh, well, I just wanted to talk about the um, emergency access. Um. Just to make sure I understood, there, there's gonna be a bus pull-off, but that's, that's still in the roadway? Yes, the pull-off is within the roadway. This. And yeah, this, this uh, access is restricted only to emergency vehicles. For instance, when they have a game day, an ambulance can park there in anticipation of an issue. Um, and. You know, if they need to deliver. You know, hockey nets or things like that, or you know, soccer nets or things like that, a maintenance truck could pull in and do that. Okay. But it'll, it'll be, the gate will be controlled.
Got it. There is no pull-off, though, just to be clear. There you, there was a pull-off. In a previous design, but the nasty OT uh, mixed. Like in terms of like a. Pull-off for the bus drop-off. That, that's like the only access to the site via vehicle uh, is the, the pull-in, the emergency egress. Buses will park at the school, which is.
And kids will walk down, is that? All right, thank you, Mark. Okay. Um, so, so essentially this is for ambulances. And, and maybe some deliveries. Um, so the, I, I do, I, I appreciate your proposal to, to. To using the grid kind of papers. Uh, I think with grass would be great. Um, we've, I've seen those used. I, I think that's particularly for a, a. Uh, a place like this that will actually not have a lot of activity. That's a great solution. Um, I did want to ask, cause uh, I am still really looking to move you out of that area as much as I can. And, and it seems to me that this is wider than necessary. Um, and I'm wondering even, you know, if it went for it. Twenty. The, the width itself is twenty feet, which is a fire department minimal requirement for, for access. Okay, even, even for that kind of an access. And, and also the turnaround, I mean, it's another. Turnaround, you know, it's twenty-two feet wide, so that'll allow for, you know, two vehicles to turn around. Um, we could probably make that narrower to say fifteen feet wide, that we've really restricted to one vehicle. And, and does it need to be that deep? That's the other, I mean, to turn around? The depth is, it's about twenty feet deep, which is what a parking space is. Quite a bit deeper than the ambulance. Um, anyway, it, I, I guess I'm just thinking that you could do a little shaving there. Yeah, I mean, it, we, we, we could, we could make it fifteen feet wide and we could probably shave five feet off its depth. I, I think those would both be great improvements, cause then you'll, you'll pull that back quite a bit. I would, uh, I only ask that you make that a condition and we would share a drawing with you demonstrating that. Yeah, I, that's, that would work for me. Okay, uh, that's it for me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, Allison, um, I think you mentioned you might want to revisit the uh. Conservation restriction. Maybe we, maybe we will talk about that a little bit.
Um, sure, and I'm trying to get. Can some confirmation on that. Um, Mark, I think, had a different understanding of the conservation restriction, so if Mark. Maybe wants to propose that.
So I mean, I think it's just, it is a, a unique setup because of uh, all the things we've, all the agencies been working with. Again. Paul Momney is the expert and again, has been coordinating with the state as well as Parks and BPDA. Uh, so I, I turn it over to Paul to just explain kind of what, what we are doing. It's a little bit different, but again, the goal is to put Article ninety-seven protection. On the site to provide that protection and perpetuity. Paul?
Yeah, thank you, Mark. Uh, Mr. Chair and. Members of the commission, um, and members of staff in attendance. So Paul Momney with Goldstone Stores and I represent Lena Du-Boston was the master developer of the Olsted Green. Project in the partner book school on this, this project. The. We initially went to the Parks Department in January. Seeking final approval uh, from Parks for a eighty-unit mixed income phase uh, of the Olsted Green Project. Um, over on the other side of Morton Street. Uh, and as part of that approval, um, we discussed the, the concept of. Um, open space restrictions throughout the Olsted Green Project, including this ball field. Um, we had been working for a number of years with. The Parks Department uh, and others in the area, trying to determine the best means of. Restricting this site for a perpetual open space restriction. For active and passive recreational uses. The, the typical um, means of such a restriction and perpetuity is of course. Conservation restriction approved by EA um, and typically. Granted from a private landowner to a municipality. Uh, here, for a number of reasons, I think. Mostly related to the, the, the nature of these improvements in being more of. Of sort of physical improvements as opposed to land conservation. It was determined that the, the, the. The um, monitoring obligations of a grantee were just sort of too convoluted. So in a typical CR, the grantee has an obligation to monitor the, the open space and make sure that. It remains in the condition that it was essentially uh, uh, as of the day of the grant. And here where there's gonna be, you know, substantive construction um, and a lot of hardscaped area, it just. It didn't seem like the right fit to use a conservation restriction. And for that reason, um, the Parks Department, and as I understand, the, the, the Concom. Weren't interested in being the grantee under the CR. So we worked with the BPDA uh, and, and the Parks Department. Um, and we looped in EA for them to just confirm that what we were planning on doing was still to accomplish the overall goal. Of ensuring that this uh, space be protected by Article ninety-seven of the master's constitution and. What the, the, the document that we've, we've come up with um, is currently in draft form. We actually have a, a meeting with Parks. Um, and, and the BPDA on Monday. But it, it follows a precedent that's used elsewhere where there's um, improved open space in the city. Uh, and it's an open space easement granted to the, the BPDA for use by the public of the space. Uh, and it contains typical easement, um, you know, maintenance obligations. Um. It does allow some limited um, use by Brook for a period of time for their exclusive use. And it requires that the field be open to the public for a minimum period of uh, public use. So that is a document that we're, we're exchanging drafts with lawyers for the Parks Department and the BPDA right now. Um, EA has confirmed that that document um, is of a nature that can confer. Article ninety-seven protection for perpetual open space. Uh, use on this site. So happy to address any other questions related to. Why the conservation restriction was deemed not to be the best play of action here, or how it came to the open space easement. Um, but that's sort of the, the, the state of affairs as they are. And like I said, after Monday's meeting with the BPDA and the Parks Department, we'll hopefully. Uh, be able to get to a final draft that we can share with the commission. Um, and, and we'd be looking to, to grant that open space season to the BPDA. As soon as we get to a, a, a resolution on, on the form, the final form.
Okay, thank you, Paul. So let me, let me try to summarize or paraphrase what you just said. So um. What would happen in this scenario is um, the um. You would, would you transfer the land to the BPDA and then uh, they would also get a uh, public easement? Uh, they would be granting an easement to the public for use. Uh, and there'd be something in the agreement that would. Call this area Park so that it would be um, subject to Article ninety-seven protections. Is that, that what you were suggesting?
No, so Brook would, would remain, or the, the, the Brook special purpose vehicle that, that's. Currently owns the property would remain the property owner. The, the open space easement grants um, the right to the public to use the field. And it essentially designates the BPDA as the, the. The grantee on behalf of the public for the ability, you know, who, who's given the ability to enforce those rights and ensure that Brook as the property owner. Um, maintain public availability and, and keep this as a accessible and, and um. Maintained and publicly available space. I, I, as to how, as to how it confers Article ninety-seven protection. Um, you know, we've, we've gone at length with, with uh, the Parks Department and EA to get everyone on board. Um. The, the Article ninety-seven uh, attaches to a property when. Either fee or easement rights. Are granted with express intent that the property. Um, or easement be uh. In uh, in the public use uh, in perpetuity for um, as the passive recreational uses. So. We have language in the open space easement that essentially just, it's, it's quite similar to what you see in the CR. Um, it's just mechanically a little different because it doesn't have EA and the municipality. Um, as, as signatories. It just would be between Brook and the BPDA, but it contains similar granting language where. It, it expresses um, uh, unequivocal intent that the, that the property be. Maintained in public access in perpetuity and, and that the protections of Article ninety-seven uh, attached to the property.
Okay, okay. Um, so by virtue of the magic words, uh, uh. Easement to the public in perpetuity for passive recreation use, that's what triggers the Article ninety-seven protections.
Yeah, in fact, we're a little more on the nose where we, we just, we say it's the grantor's intent that, that, you know. For the avoidance of doubt, that this, this grant shall confer. The protections of Article ninety-seven on the property. And we, we, we have that um, express language right in the document to. Ensure that there's no question uh, in the future. For the intent of the grantor.
Okay, uh, so Allison, I think the uh, trick here is uh, uh, it's probably the same process. We would like to see these documents before construction.
Yeah, and happy to jump in. I'm, I'm thankful for that additional context and happy that that meeting has been set up. I have spoken with the Parks Department today. And the, neither they nor the lawyers are yet. You know, happy enough to say that they're final because that, that future work is going. So. One potential option would be, as you stated, language that said either. This is, this is satisfactory or a conservation restriction is in place.
Good, okay, Paul, thank you. Okay, do we want to uh, go to the public? Is there anybody from the public who would like to testify and? And be assured that if you testified at a um, previous hearing, it's all one uh, hearing that's been continued. Uh, so your testimony is on the record. If you've sent in a letter. Uh, either in support of opposition, that's also on the record. Uh, so it's not um, necessary to. Um, testify verbally, but certainly if you'd like to, uh. Uh, so it's not um necessary to um testify verbally, but certainly if you'd like to, uh uh, we will take um, we'll take you in the order that you raise your hand. Um, who's up first, Allison?
We have Kyla Bennett.
Thank you very much. Um. I submitted a letter today, which hopefully you are all able to read. My name is Kyla Bennett. I work for Public Employees for Environmental Responsibility. I'm located here in Massachusetts, but Pure is a uh national nonprofit. I have a PhD in ecology and a law degree, and I was the one who discovered PFAS in artificial turf. I am shocked and dismayed to hear what you read from DEP. They are wrong and we will be appealing that. As you know, Commissioners, the term alter under the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act is defined to include any destruction of vegetation or change in drainage characteristics or water flow patterns or any change in the water table or water quality. The fact that PFAS is not mentioned in the Wetlands Protection Act is like saying because AR fifteens aren't mentioned in the Constitution, then they are okay. Okay, this is not, this is not a reasonable interpretation and we will be challenging that. The other thing I wanted to raise that does not involve PFAS, two other issues. One is the information that was submitted by both the landscape architect and the other information was, there were so many misstatements of fact in there. It it was, it was frightening. For example, there is PFAS in Brockville. Brockville does not significantly reduce the temperature of the field. Um, so many mistakes. They're all laid out in my letter. I'm not going to go into them now. The one other additional thing I want to mention is this. For those of you who have read the IPCC report, you will notice that in figure seven, this is the IPCC report that came out just two weeks ago. You will notice that in figure seven, it says that to combat climate change, we must leave our trees intact and keep our natural ecosystems intact as much as possible. That will give us more to fight climate change than all the wind power, for example, that we could possibly build. So I would urge the Conservation Commission to think a little bit outside the box here because this field will contribute to climate change. It will adversely impact your wetlands and your waters. It will harm your athletes and it's really an awful, awful idea. There is a bill pending in the Massachusetts Legislature to ban artificial turf fields for all of these reasons. You have a duty to protect these wetlands, this habitat, this ecosystem in these waters, and this artificial turf field is not the way to do it. My letter also outlines all of the other chemicals that are in Brockville and artificial turf. And so if you can't regulate PFAS, does that mean you can't regulate any chemical? That doesn't make sense and it flies in the face of the Wetlands Protection Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, who's next, Allison?
Alana Feaster.
Hi, I just wanted to uh dovetail on what Dr. Bennett was saying. So I I am too very upset at the fact that PFAS is not being considered as Director Butters, and there's a few of us on the call here. We will be impacted for generations to come. Our children will be impacted from the contamination that this site, everyone knows will cause. Um, the information and the supplemental material that was provided by the proponent has all outdated information. PFAS was discovered in twenty nineteen, so they're providing information from nineteen sixty eight, two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen to substantiate why they feel that this toxic turf that will contaminate the wetlands, contaminate the Canterbury Brook and contaminate our children and our families for generations to come is safe. Would they put it in their backyard? I know they won't, and I'm sure they live in tree-lined streets that don't have artificial turf fields contaminating their children from sunup to sundown. It is unbelievable that in an environmental justice community, when the science has been presented, the doctors have sent in information, climate climate scientists have provided documentation. Our health matters to us. These people who don't live in our community are coming in here and dictating what we need to be dealt with uh for the rest of our lives. It's unacceptable and we will be appealing to the highest levels possible because our life is non-negotiable, our health is non-negotiable. Their supplemental material was filled with lies and misleading information to this commission. And I really hope that it it's denied tonight on every element that we have discussed because this is unbelievable, that they're still proposing and under the guise of they're doing something great for our community. We live here. We know what we want in our community and a super fun site is not what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Allison, anyone else?
We don't have any other hands raised. We do have a number of comments that are in the record in the chat.
Okay, so being in the chat, they are preserved for the uh record? So
We now have a new hand that's been raised. Yvonne Lowry?
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Um, hello, uh, yes. Uh, my name is Yvonne Delia. Um, I I am a member of the Friends of Mania Casa Boulevard. We um, um, we formed a campaign that was successful in uh saving the trees on the boulevard. And I am uh appalled at the the uh nerve of the proponents of this project to propose to eliminate seventy-four mature trees to put a uh a a playing field in its place when there is plenty of testimonies and uh evidence that there is enough open space in the area for the public and that this is an unnecessary project. I hope that the Commission uh pays attention to all of our testimony against this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Allison, anyone else?
Um, Derek Evans is unmuted, but the hand is not raised. I'm not sure whether he's seeking to speak.
Yes, thank you. I'm trying to raise my hand, but I I'm not, I'm sorry, this is a little
That's okay. Yeah.
All right, yeah, thank you for hosting the hearing. Um, I want to start by saying that uh I I just want to give a shout uh myself and I know probably at least one other person on this uh meeting uh knew Senator Ed Brooke. He once lived on Ruthven Street in Roxbury. And I know uh beyond a shadow of a doubt that were he alive today, I think two things I can say for sure. Uh, he would be very uh adamant uh that the the children of that community and of this area served by the Ed Brooke Charter School would receive the very best of all academic recreational uh community discourse about issues like this uh that they deserve, uh including adequate play areas uh as well as environmental justice, uh as well as protection and prevention of the very items listed by this uh Commission in the purpose for this meeting. In the brief paragraph citing the two enabling pieces of legislation, Boston and Massachusetts, justifying this meeting, uh Concom uses the word protector protection four times and prevention twice. And under those two words, it identifies one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine very important matters to either protect or prevent. And in the discussion of this project, uh which I'm new to, admittedly, um, I am very concerned, uh alarmed even and fearful. Because what I don't see here uh is, it it I'm, well, look, first, the school, the Ed Brooke Charter School, I think is in, believes in good faith that is doing the best thing for the children, for the community and for the environment with the uh the general idea, the 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 things that are being discussed here about doing so forth. But the fact of the matter is that despite that intention and that effort, this is in fact several critically several of the listed uh protective and preventative goals that Concom has identified and that are are supposed to be stare me in my participation in this meeting. Um, that that are not uh being protected or I I don't think it's adequately protected or prevented in this project. First of all, it is an environmental justice community and I'm also sure uh Senator Brooke will be very concerned about that. We are in an era of climate change and the late Senator Brooke will be very concerned about that. I hope that the the Brook School is teaching students uh about not only the past and our late great leaders like Ed Brooke and 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 so forth, but also how to be responsible stewards of their future locally, regionally, nationally and internationally. And that means modeling uh the right kind of decision-making, community information and self-information that I think will place a higher priority than this project. And unfortunately, this Commission, which is supposed to be uh regulatory, is placing on matters like protecting public interest. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, it's a privately owned charter school, right? It gets paid uh by the tax dollars from the Commonwealth that is impacting a publicly owned uh and of multiple interest property uh that has a lot to do with public uh water supply, groundwater as a wetland. Uh, I don't know, but I imagine possibly fishery at some level, maybe shellfish. Has anyone asked, is there any shellfish? This Commission is here to protect according to the uh language, that among other things, and the prevention of pollution, flooding and uh storm damage. Now, frankly, the altering of a wetland habitat is absolutely absolutely anywhere. Where I come from, on the Gulf Coast of Mississippi, midpoint between New Orleans and Mobile, Alabama, my ancestral community is an in an internationally known climate justice, environmental justice of its life after being founded by former slaves in eighteen sixty-six. And and the last and only line of defense that we have there and that I dare say people in this area of the community of Butters and others for their public and environmental health is the responsible stewardship of wetlands, groundwater, surface water, habitat and canopy, not just canopy, and by canopy.
Mr. Evans, uh and I hate to break in, I just have to ask if you could um uh start to wrap it up. We've got uh other people and we have other hearings tonight and I understand what you're saying, um, but if
Well, I'll say first of all, this is an environment, this is a quintessential environmental justice issue. It is a quintessential wetlands protection issue. It is a quintessential runoff pollution issue. I can't even imagine a placing a PFAS-laden uh plastic turf field anywhere today in today's age with the known science, much less in a functioning wetland that's publicly owned in the city of Boston adjacent to a community named after Frederick Law Olmstead um and and by a school named for Ed Brooke. This thing is fraught with irony. My last point is this. Um, it, I heard that uh there is an an obligation to maintain in perpetuity uh as either an active or passive uh recreation site. This property that happens to be a wetland and all the other things that I and others have mentioned is the uh construction of this project, which is going to take some amount of time. Is that active or is it passive recreation or neither? Uh, and is that time span part of perpetuity or not?
Okay, thank you. Um, Allison, anyone else?
I'm not seeing anyone else.
Okay, great, thank you. And thank you to everybody who has testified and sent in letters. Um, so with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing with the special conditions that um uh we've outlined before, uh most notably the um land restrictions and may perpetual maintenance obligations, the agreement, whether it be Article eighty-seven protections or the conservation restriction. Do I have that motion?
No moves.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
Okay, and I vote aye, so that carries for nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP file number unassigned uh from Weston and Sampson on behalf of Bos- Boston Public Works Department for the proposed rehabilitation of the Glenwood Ave Avenue pedestrian bridge that crosses the Nippon City River and and MBTA right of way located at Glenwood Ave Hyde Park, Mass. Uh, resource areas, riverfront area, waterfront area, one hundred foot buffer to inland bank. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is Sam Moffett of Weston and Sampson. Um, I'm uh joined uh also by Ben Sun of the Boston Public Works Department and Preston Huckabee of Gill Engineering. Um, Preston is the designer of the project. I'm happy to um provide uh a brief presentation here describing uh the Glenwood Avenue Pedestrian Bridge Rehabilitation Project. And Allison, if you can advance to the to the next slide, the next one, please. Uh, so this uh project um takes place in Hyde Park. Um, again, the the um facility uh is an existing pedestrian bridge that crosses the Nippon City River and also crosses the MBTA commuter rail tracks um in the in the area of the Truman Parkway and Glenwood Avenue. Um, and if you can go to the next slide, please, Allison. Um, here are several uh images of the of the existing facility. Um, as you can see, it's a steel plate um bridge um that spans the Nippon City River. Um, uh, there are, there are no um elements of the of the bridge that are uh in the river at this point. Um, it's a, it's a span of the river. Um, the bridge also, um, and you can't probably see it all that well, but in the left image, um, you can see kind of in the in the top left-hand corner. Um, there's a a second segment of the bridge that crosses over the MBTA railroad tracks back there. Um, as you can see, the condition of the existing bridge um is somewhat deteriorated. Um, and the Public Works Department um is proposing to rehabilitate this structure. Um, and that will include um the uh rehabilitation of the uh substructure, um, the superstructure and uh the wooden uh deck that you see here. Um, and if you can go to the next slide, please, Allison. Um, you're, you're not going to be able to see much here, but um this this uh image shows you the uh extent of the full existing facility, um the span over the Nippon City River, which is in the lower left uh side of the of the image. Um, and then uh the the additional structure over the railroad tracks, um more or less in the middle top uh portion of the image. Um, so the Public Works Department and Gill Engineering have developed a design and a construction approach uh very intentionally and deliberately to uh avoid work in the Nippon City River or in uh resource areas, um subject to your district jurisdiction under the Mass Wetlands Protection Act or the Boston Wetlands Ordinance. Um, there will be no uh work um in the in the river. There'd be no um vessels or or um any work impacting the water itself. Um, the rehabilitation work on the span um will take place uh, you know, um from the top side uh and uh um, there are uh some minor um uh foundation rehabilitation um activities uh that I will point to in a moment, but um uh the um an important point um that I I think that it's important for us to make is that uh the phasing of this project uh will will be intentionally um uh set up to avoid uh impact to the commuting public um and and um so that uh there will, there will not be uh work, extensive work proposed um while school is open, um in particular, um to avoid um uh inconveniencing residents of Boston who who use this facility during that period of time. Um, we are proposing to do the work uh during um Boston Public Schools vacation period this summer. Um, if you can go to the next slide, please, Allison. Um, so there, there are essentially two elements of this project that um take place uh in resource areas. Um, the first is on the uh western approach to the bridge um on the Glenwood Avenue side of the bridge on the West Bank. Um, and at this location, uh Gill has determined that um from a structural standpoint, it's important to uh replace um the foundational um elements of the bridge or or to rehabilitate um those and 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 one of the activities that they are proposing is um uh in introducing helical piles um at this location and and um uh these helical piles, if people aren't familiar with uh these helical piles, uh people aren't familiar with them, um are uh very minimally invasive and and um what what the activity will require is removing um several of the uh existing um granite riprap stones in this location. Um lifting those out and uh and then uh drilling these uh helical pile devices uh into the substrate um to a location where they um provide structural support for the facility. And then um those uh voids where the stones have been removed and the helical piles have been introduced will then be um filled uh with um material to hold them in place. Uh next slide, please, Allison. Um on the uh east uh side of the river, um what is proposed is uh making um the existing foundation um points, uh some of them, five of them um more uh rigid by uh encasing them in concrete and this activity uh again will be um uh we will minimize the the activity in the in the resource area to the extent that we can. Um and uh so um that will require um, you know, a little bit of work and and um hopefully not uh too much. And and so if we can go to the next slide, please, Allison. So again, this is a uh an image that you probably can't see very well on your screen, um but we've calculated that um uh what we are proposing to impact um is uh, you know, as you can see, a small amount of riverfront, um a small amount of bank um and a small amount of waterfront area. Um and this is primarily temporary um alteration of 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 work in these areas. And you can see in this image here, the the pink uh areas are um on the left side uh where the helical piles that I described uh would be placed. Um and on the right-hand side, uh where the concrete encasement of the existing foundations would be taking place. Um and uh I I believe that's my last slide and and um we of course are happy to welcome uh questions from the commission.
Sure. Thank you, Sam. So a quick question, how are you protecting um or preventing debris from falling in uh to the water while you're doing the work above?
Sure. So the the structure will be shrouded, um will be will be wrapped um in a in a containment uh device and and um I could uh Mister Huckabee, who's on the phone, could could probably speak um in in more detail if that's required.
Uh sure, absolutely. Um this is similar to work that uh uh Boston Public Works did a couple of years ago at Central Avenue. Um and uh the uh system will be uh hung platforms underneath the structure. Uh there'll be rigid platforms to provide access to the workers. Those will be covered with uh tarps. Uh and then a a a shroud will be erected over the structure and that'll provide a um a containment system to prevent any debris from escaping. Uh there will be a uh what's referred to as a recycler, which is a large vacuum system. Uh and uh and and uh that will be uh parked on Glenwood Avenue. Uh and uh, you know, the contractor will be working with the residents along there um uh to try to avoid that to the extent possible. Uh all the work will be done in the daytime. Uh the vacuum system uh will be piped to the various uh containment areas and that will uh produce a negative pressure within the containment area, which will ensure that all the debris, dust, all of the all of that uh 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 material that's uh created through the cleaning process will be vacuumed out. Uh and that will prevent uh any escapes uh into the environment uh and um uh to the extent possible, uh you know, the uh or I should say the the material will will be completely uh collected and and removed off-site uh and and properly disposed.
Okay, good. Thank you. Um, okay, um Allison, do you have anything on this?
I think you covered it, Chair. Uh other than they were issued a file number earlier today.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. Want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at C C at Boston dot com or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle at Boston Viro and using the hashtag Concom Hearing. Um Commissioner Herbst, I know that um you did a site visit, I believe, here. So why don't I let you go first to set the table?
Okay. Um, one, I wanted to appreciate the use of helical piles. I think that's a a good that's helpful in terms of lesser disturbance. Um so it, one question I had is y- your filing talks about needing to clear the bank and I'm wondering what that means. Is there tree removal? Is there vegetation removal? Uh and I and and now and if so, I think we would want that quantified.
Sh- sure. So um Allison, if you if you could actually go back to the slide that has uh the two or three pictures on it. You can see um on the on the uh west side of the span, there are uh some trees um in the in the vicinity of the of the project. Um and I I believe that there is one tree um in that location that um maybe impacted and and um Mister Huckabee might be able to.
Yes. So we've we've gone through the site with the contractor um on the 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 two trees that are in the view uh are not going to be touched. There are some smaller diameter uh brush uh under the structure and alongside the structure that will need to be removed uh to provide access and allow them to to uh get uh structural steel in. Uh on the bank that's being shown in the middle photo, uh there's some small diameter trees that are near the structure that are going to need to be cleared away just to provide access. Uh but none of the largest, none of the larger trees are going to be affected because they're, you know, quite frankly, outside of the area that we're going to be working. So um so the the larger bold trees will be uh left in place. Uh it'll be smaller diameter stuff that that's more along the brush size and saplings uh that they'll have to uh that will have to clear out.
Okay, well, related to that, I mean, I think I'm guessing we will want to know a little more detail on that, but um you, the regs require that the that the project will be as redevelopment will be an improvement in the riverfront area and you and you said it will be uh in your proposal, but you didn't say how. And I guess particularly since you are removing vegetation. I it it appears to me that you've done a great job making this minimally invasive, but I'm not sure I it I'd be interested to hear what you, how you would characterize it as an improvement.
So um uh we we submitted the project um as a as a limited project. I I you may have picked that up um in review. Um and and so um our our approach has been to um meet the performance standards to the extent that we are able to. And I and I and I think we have done um a a pretty effective job of of meeting the performance standards. Um and uh I I think um on this on this question of of um whether we are um providing an improvement to the to the bank uh or the or the or the resource areas present. Um uh, you know, I I think um you know, we maybe we maybe sort of in a in a place where we're where we're not doing harm, um but maybe not not improving it either. I think just to be fully candid, I think I think we're we're sort of um maintaining the the integrity of the resource area. Um and as and as Mister Huckabee said, we we are um not removing any mature trees. Um and and we are um not going to be uh impacting the um riverfront resource values um in this area.
Okay. Well, I.
Commissioner Herbst, just, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I I will say that um this is a project is certainly certainly in the minority of projects that come in front of us that are cert limited. Um limited project status. I did look at the regs pretty carefully on this and I tend to agree that it is a limited project. I usually don't, um but I think in this case it's warranted.
I understood. I I I'd be interested if there's any openness to some kind of revegetation or vegetation work there. Um the other question I have is just looking at the where the footings are now. Um although I think when I was there, the river looked lower than that, but um it looks like erosion control is going to be a challenge. Uh I'm wondering if you have thoughts about that.
Uh so the those footings that are in the middle photo, uh the footings themselves are not going to be uh touched essentially. Steel that's on top of them will be. Uh the helical piles are are uphill, up slope of that behind that pier between the uh between that pier and the roadway. And then there's another line that's going to be in the in the middle. Um so we will be putting down sedimentation barriers uh along the slopes uh in between where the work will is occurring uh and uh and 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 the bottom of the bank itself. Um in the right-hand photo, uh we don't have a photo of the the foundations that we're going to be accessing uh on the portion uh that's running along the bank on the east side of the bridge, uh excuse me, the east side of the river. But the uh foundations that we're going to be accessing again are on the uphill side because the structural steel is buried and we need to expose that to access it. Uh the downhill side, it's concrete, that's that's exposed. We won't be touching that concrete either. Again, it'll just be the structural steel on top.
Okay, thanks. So so are you telling me the erosion control for in the middle picture will be on the up upside of those?
It will be just upside of the pier. So it'll be between, you know, it it'll it'll essentially be running alongside the pier itself.
Okay, thanks. No more questions for me.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Uh the helical piles are in addition to the existing piles that are there are the support columns. You're not going to remove any support columns?
That's correct.
Okay. How deep are these helicals going?
On the order of fifteen to twenty feet, uh we did receive information uh from Boston Water and Sewer on the presence of a water line running parallel to the bridge, and we certainly appreciate that. And we are absolutely going to uh go out and and uh, you know, uh determining to the extent possible exactly where it is and and figure out some clearances around it and ensure that we're not going to uh impact that. That's certainly not something we want to have happen.
Right, yeah. Well, that was gonna be my next one. I want to make sure you didn't find it. So that would be a positive.
It would be a it would be a a bad day, so we don't want to have that.
Right. And and finally, you're you're doing all this work and at the end of it all, this will not be ADA compliance, I take it. So we're just fixing what we got to how that works.
Oh, uh maybe I'll defer that also to you, Mister Huckabee, but I but I think the answer is um that we are providing um uh improvements to um the handrail um such that um the handrail is is um improved for public safety and and um with respect to ADA, uh we are not um we are not providing um update. It's a it's a it's an old structure and I think um uh Preston, can you can you speak to it?
We're rehabilitating the existing facility uh and uh and bringing it back into compliance. Uh the view is that um you know, it it I I think that the the uh Public Works Department um uh is is understanding that this this work needs to occur.
Yeah, okay. I I just wasn't sure when you touch something like that, whether you got to bring it up to standards or you're allowed to because it would be so difficult to be a whole brand new project. Um I was curious more than anything else. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Long?
Thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I know looking at this as a limited, but I want to echo uh Commissioner Herbst's interest in a potentially some vegetation added. Um could even be in the form of uh additions to the erosion control seeding. I know that there, you know, several seed mixes out there that, you know, could be suitable for this riverfront area. Um so curious about um willingness on the applicant's part for adding a wildlife-centric seeding.
Sure, if the if the uh commission would like to add uh a seeding requirement to the order of conditions, we can certainly uh investigate uh appropriate mixes to uh to put on the slope. That would not be uh an issue whatsoever.
Excellent.
Great.
And uh that's all I have, Chair.
Great, thank you. Uh Commissioner Herbst, the the seeding uh option here, how do you feel?
I feel like Commissioner Long is a great addition to our commission.
Absolutely.
Yeah, sounds good.
Good, thank you. Okay, uh Allison, uh anybody from the public?
We had one comment in the chat from Yvonne um Larry about the how many mature trees would be affected by the project. Think we discussed that, but if there's anything else.
I I think I think we've we've um answered the question and I'll just state again um that we we do not intend to um remove any mature trees.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing, adding a special condition to the order of conditions. Um requiring the, you know, Commissioner Long, I'll let you make this motion and fill in the blank here, requiring the type of seeding that you discussed.
Uh, so moved.
Okay, did you want to add any color to the seeding um requirement?
Um a suitable mix for um its proximity to the water level, example being uh New England Wetland Plains as one uh producer.
Fantastic, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
I vote aye, that carries for nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome very much.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, we're moving around a little bit, is going to be the request for determination of applicability from Ty and Bond Inc. On behalf of Boston Gas Company, DBA National Grid for the proposed gas main replacement within a portion of M Street located at two twenty to two thirty M Street in South Boston. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Hello, my name is Julia Navatney. I'm I work for Ty and Bond and here on behalf of Boston Gas Company.
Okay. So Julia, haven't we seen this before?
Um, no. So um I was here a couple of weeks ago for a different project on Columbia Road, which is.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, so the project is um between two twenty and two thirty M Street in South Boston. Um next, please. And it's the replacement of two hundred thirty linear feet of gas main. Um, sorry, that says Columbia Road um for M Street and M Street um adjacent to Columbia Road. Um so it's two hundred thirty linear feet of four-inch diameter main that's existing. Um it's currently cast iron main installed in nineteen twelve and it's being replaced with two hundred thirty linear feet of an eight-inch diameter plastic main. And so this is in M Street between Columbia Road and Marine Road. Next, please. Um so the work will consist of the excavation of a trench approximately two feet wide um and three feet deep to uh support the pipe um at that depth. And the trench will be excavated in M Street, but the exact location will be determined based on the existing existing subsurface utilities determined in in the field. Um trenches will be backfilled daily and they will be restored in kind following the completion of the gas main installation. Um and the co- construction equipment that will be used is generally going to be um excavator and dump truck um mobilized on the roadway, so standard construction equipment. Next, please. Uh National Grid will use their standard best management practices, um their erosion control measures like straw bale, felt fences, straw waddles and um catch basin, salt sac inserts where necessary. Um and all of the BMPs will be kept in good working order by um the contractor and inspected after storm events. Next, please. Um so the work is within partially within land subject to coastal storm flowage um based on an eleven-foot base flood elevation um that was determined using LiDAR for our our ma- on our mapping. Um so a portion of the work, approximately sixty-two square feet of impact, and that is about thirty-one linear feet of the gas main replacement is within the limits of land subject to coastal storm flood. Um no adverse impacts are anticipated because the work is all within previously paved areas and um there are no proposed changes in grades um or conditions of the existing existing area. Next, please. And this is um an aerial map of the the area. So you can see the gas main replacement is, like I said, between Marine Road and Columbia Road on that portion of M Street. Um and the southern portion of the replacement is within land subject to coastal storm flowage. Um and similar to the Columbia Road project that I brought a couple of weeks ago, um this work is is being done because of water main encroachment. Um it's been understanding that the uh Boston Water and Sewer Commission is going to be doing some some work in this area. So they're proactively doing some replacement and relocation of the gas mains in this area. doing some replacement and relocation of the gas mains in this area. And that's all that I have, are there any questions?
Okay, great, thank you. Um, okay, just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six, unmute yourself, send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov or via Twitter. By tagging the Twitter handle at Boston Enviro and using the hashtag concom hearing. Uh, Allison, anything on this?
Um, just a recommendation, the standard erosion controls apply and a question about the length of time the work is expected to take.
True.
Um, yeah, so um length of time, this is relatively short um section of gas main, um, I would expect probably um a couple of weeks, not not very long. Um, and they plan to start work as soon as um they have the applicable authorizations, because like I mentioned, there's that um water main work that's going to be happening in the area soon.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you, Allison. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, as I mentioned last time, um, it it's kind of ironic, they do move gas mains away from the water main so they can be put in and they put them square on top of our sewers and drains. So I would ask you one more time, that's natural uh National Grid to put the new main somewhere where it doesn't interfere with other utility work that will be following up in a year or two, so we get to move it a second time. So we just talked, they rarely do we get plans saying we're gonna put it here. They search and destroy out in the street looking for a spot and there's always a nice spot on top of sewers. So we can just relay that to them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Long?
I have nothing on this chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Allison, uh, any members of the public?
I'm seeing none.
Okay, so with that, I would uh entertain a motion to uh issue um uh negative determination of applicability with the standard erosion controls provisions.
I moved.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries for nothing. Okay, let's backtrack a little bit here.
Thank you very much.
Well, you're welcome, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is unassigned DEP and unassigned Boston file number from, no, I'm sorry. We moved around, where are we going back to? Here we go. Okay, sorry. Uh, next item on the agenda is actually notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one nine two six and Boston file number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one six from Hughes Environmental Consulting on behalf of the Roxbury Home for Aging Women for the proposed ecological improvements, including invasive removal, native planting and trail improvements located at twelve twenty-five Center Street in West Roxbury. The resource areas are Vernal Pool Habitat, one hundred foot buffer zones to BVW and Inland Bank, who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Good evening, Tom Hughes with Hughes Environmental Consulting, um, thank you for taking that RDA ahead of me, I appreciate that. Um, I'm kind of in the middle of a forty B hearing in another community, so it's a it's a so it's actually a pleasure to leave that hearing right now. Um, however, uh, so so I'm here on behalf of um Sophia Snowplace and uh on the uh on the uh meeting with me tonight is Miles Connors from uh from Parter Garden uh as well as Patty Rogavine from Sophia Snowplace, I believe is here as well. Uh, you may be familiar with this site, there you entertained a development uh application for this site several years back, this is um adjacent to the Vernal Pool that is um uh right, right at Allendale Wood and you've also issued a notice of intent for an adjacent area for or an order of conditions for an adjacent area for invasive work uh for the Urban Wilds Program. So uh, what you're looking at here is a picture, you can see Sophia Snowplace, the building at the very top. Um, the Vernal Pool to your left and you have Center Street off to your right. At the bottom of the picture is um, I think that's Faulkner. Um, and there's a stream that is at the outlet of the Vernal Pool that runs into a pipe and then runs off under center, that's an intermittent stream. We go to the next slide. I think you all know where it is, but you know, I have an obligation to tell you where it is, twelve twenty-five Center Street. Um, it's right across the street from the project you were hearing hearing from earlier. Um, if we can go on to the next slide. So here's an aerial photograph with the wetland resources shown, I apologize, my GPS entered two B twelves, that's corrected on your site plan. Um, but I have a harder time correcting it on my ortho photo. Um, but you can see the um the Vernal Pool is the dark uh area and the uh the location arrow is pointing to the area around the intermittent stream that leaves the Vernal Pool and then goes into a pipe. Um, and then uh there is a trailhead that's also part of the project that's up above those B twelve flags. Uh, that is the entrance to Allendale and um in that area, we're looking to improve the trail to give it a an accessible slope. Uh, because many of the residents at Sophia Snowplace um are uh are mobility challenged and the dip in the trail right now creates a little bit more of a a tough time for them to access uh access that trail. So if we can go why to the next slide. Just wanted to show you it's not in a floodplain and it's not proposed to be in a floodplain in the preliminary map, we can go on to the next slide. It's another aerial photograph from the south, um, we can go to the next. Okay, here, this is kind of a good one, you can see the trailhead, um, which is right at that uh corner of the building where you can kind of see the bend in the sidewalk, um, where uh above the Vernal Pool where the trail kind of goes into uh Allendale Woods. So that's one component of this notice, the other component is invasive uh removal, control and native plantings uh down around the stream and this is phase one. There will be a phase two notice coming for this property that will include um an extension of the trailhead down to Center Street. A uh public healing garden and a bunch of other uh really nice things that are uh part of Sophia Snowplace's effort to uh to turn this into essentially an extension of Allendale Woods. Um, and at the same time, they're also taking some uh some really good measures in areas that are not jurisdictional to the commission uh in terms of the overall property. Um, okay, we can go to the next slide. Okay, so you can see the two clouded areas, you can see uh the clouded area in front of you and I'll have Parter kind of go through that, but in that area um there are a number of invasive trees and shrubs, we will be uh controlling those. In some cases, we're removing trees, cutting flush, in other cases, we will actually be um leaving the snags in place and uh with the trees that are removed. One of the things we're doing in our phase two part of the project is we're trying to see whether or not we can get a portable sawmill to come in and mill some of that lumber up for use in the um in the healing garden and maybe planting beds, things like that, trying to maintain the stored carbon that's represented uh by by those large trees. That's one thing with a large mature tree is it tends to be a good store of carbon, whereas a young forest like we're going to be uh installing in that area uh sequesters more carbon as it grows uh than the than the mature. So you can think of the mature trees, it's like your savings account and the uh the younger forest is kind of all the money you're trying to put into the savings account. Uh, if we can go to the next slide. So this is an idea of what we want to do um at the trailhead, so we will essentially be constructing a bridge with two trail-like abutments at each end consisting of either timber or curbing that is laid out so we can uh put in the the stone dust um aggregate material um up to grade to basically bring it up so we can have the framing above ground. And then the bridge will go to the next um one at the very end, and if you can picture from trail improvement to trail improvement, it will be a perfectly straight line at five percent. Um, and I have a picture of what that looks like in a similar application, if we can go to the next uh slide. If you look at that bottom center, that is actually a uh trail that we did in Needham uh in conservation land and you can see the curbing and that curbing is used to essentially bring the trail up to meet the boardwalk. That's a concept that we're using here, um, you can see on the right. Um, that is a bridge that actually goes out through wetlands. Um, and in that case, we used granite blocks, but the same concept, we need something to kind of contain the trail on either side and then um the boardwalk goes smooth and flat from there. Um, we show on the detail, if we can just go back to the prior slide. What we show here is sonotubes supporting the structure. We are evaluating the use of diamond piers so that would be less impactful. Um, but we wanted to show you the most aggressive design since we're not sure we can use diamond piers. And ask that you condition that we give you a final plan uh for the construction of that, that um you know, is either based on on this diagram or or one that would include diamond piers. Diamond piers are just little blocks that set at grade and you put three pins that are more or less like rebar into the ground and that um you can actually build in addition onto a house with those things in the right setting, but we just haven't done any probe work to make sure that that would work here. Um, so we'll want to finalize that design, make a decision between timber and granite for the uh sort of abutment. And I'm using quote air quotes around that um and for the uh and for the support of the bridge, you know, the uh the diamond piers. If we can um go to the next slide. Um, so you can see on the upper left the dip in the trail and I don't know, I'm sure you guys have walked it, many of you have at least walked that trail. As you leave Sophia Snowplace, you kind of go down and then you go straight up again, or not straight up, but but up and that little dip and then the steep slope makes it uh awkward for some of the residents, so we're hoping to smooth that out. Um, there is a drainage feature that was installed there as part of uh your other order that was issued to parks for this area and we have been in touch with uh Paul Sutton about this design and about the overall approach and and how this blends and merges and is essentially an extension of the work that that he's been doing here. Um, if we go to the next slide. So this is a picture of the Vernal Pool area, um, you can see in the upper center the outlet from the Vernal Pool and then you can see the um the stream is, you know, a a good view of it, I think, is in that bottom right one. Um, and uh and that's all been flagged. My flags are very consistent with two prior flaggings, both that done for parks as well as uh that that was done for the prior uh development. Um, so with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Miles to give a quick run through of the uh invasive protocol and the uh and the replanting uh that is proposed. So if we can go to the next slide. Okay, Miles? Thank you, Tom, and members of the commission. Um, just for the record on Miles Connors with Parter Ecological. Um, we're working with uh Sophia Snowplace and Tom on this particular project as a has also a restoration from the outlet of this Vernal Pool down to the culvert on Center Street. Um, this is a uh continuation of sorts um from what we started along the banks of Allendale Woods um several years ago um to the private property at Sophia Snowplace. So we are proposing um management of invasive understory shrubs and trees in this particular location, again, from that uh from that outlet. Um, there it's, you know, dominated with these species as as you can see here, a lot of uh bittersweet in this particular area as well as burning bush, small patches of excuse me, Japanese knotweed, as well as honeysuckle, uh multiflora rose um and and other species. So there is a um fairly like dominant invasive uh overstory that we're looking to open up to create more diversity both in the, not only the canopy layer with natives, but also in the shrub layer and also the ground layer, uh next slide please. So this would be the proposed uh planting plan, you can see the steep slopes of this outlet um swale that goes down to the culvert on Center Street. Um, so we're uh in the process of looking at um, you know, larger trees, shrubs and um and also seeding and live staking uh down into the uh into the outlet. Next slide please. Which is a cross section, um, just looking through the ravine, I mean, this is, you know, showing still a canopy layer as well as a shrub layer on these particular banks in the center there, you can see that outlet swale that we're looking at as a wet meadow plant community. You know, everything from herbaceous species like sensitive fern and swan milkweeds. Um, you know, blue vervanes and blue flags, joe pie, et cetera. Like with a more um open, some more open sunlight in there. Coming up on the banks is more of a scrub shrub, wetland on both sides of the bank up to a more um upland buffer with trees and shrubs. Next slide please. So this is a description specifically of the trees that we're proposing planting. Um, this is up on the on the left-hand slide. I'm sorry, on the left-hand side of the left slide. You can see that um there are a lot of the property line is right there, so we are proposing uh planting you know, um trees on that particular edge, also wrapping around the nose um of that out outlet swale closest to Center Street. And then as you go up the hill, um other clusters of of uh native shrubs. Um, currently, we have twenty-seven trees proposed with pretty high diversity, as you can see in the right-hand um right-hand slide. Next slide. This is shrub layer, there's a total of two hundred fifty-eight shrubs that we've proposed, um again, a lot of diversity here. Everything from uh wetlands down along the edges of the outlet swale to more of upland species along the top of the bank. And next slide please. And then we're also looking at um planting plugs and containers, this and live staking showing on, this is more in that um in that lower that lower swale area, a combination of a lot of diversity associated with both the um this seeding would also and plugs would be done on the banks themselves. Um, going down to the swale and then we would have um the live staking that would be, you know, taking place later in the season, most likely in November uh to December of this season or early next year. In the, you know, up until around March, the live staking would occur to get such species as like the button bush and and dogwoods, willows and elderberry. Um, so with that, I open to any questions that the commission may have.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you, Tom, uh, just want to make note, um, uh, I liked your analogy of the savings accounts. Uh, but in lieu of the Silicon Valley Bank uh meltdown, you might want to put that one on the shelf for a little while, reintroduce it in a year or two. Um, anyway, um, want to remind members of the public uh to provide public comment, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six, unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle at Boston Enviro and using the hashtag concom hearing. Allison, do you have anything on this?
Uh, just a question, how long do you expect this work to take and when do you plan to start it?
Uh, Miles, do you want to give an idea of what your timeframe is? So when you're looking at something like the Japanese knotweed, um, you know, I would say that it's probably upwards of three years. This is at a time when, you know, you're really targeting um the the um the management methods. You know, with approval from the commission, we'd like to start this season. Um, that would that would include um initial initial like invasive management through the area through the through the course of the season, um, and then into in into this fall um really start to do a lot of the uh planting um once invasive plants have been removed. We would bet, we would also continue to be on site um working with Sophia Snowplace to make sure that we are maintaining and stewarding um the property into um, you know, into a stable state. Um, so that is really, we're looking at most likely, I would say, probably like three years of actually being on site at appropriate times. But but if I can just ask you to clarify, when would you expect all the plantings would be in? And the the initial rounds of invasive work done? We would start with the uh planting of the tree species, uh I would suspect that that could be done in the late summer, early fall of this season. Um, and then we could even follow up with some of the shrubs at that time as well, so the woody plant material. And I would say in the spring of next year, we would probably post Vernal Pool activity. Post Vernal Pool activities, so probably late June. You know, into early July, start to work in some of the perennial layers.
Thanks, and you got, yeah, the reference to the the Vernal Pool condition.
And if I can, if I can add one thing that I forgot to mention, DEP did issue some comments and they suggested conditioning that. The work not occurred during the active Vernal Pool. Area and they suggested summer and fall. The the appropriate times for the work, which which we're fine with. The one thing we would like to be able to do by hand. Is trim the knotweed down so that we're treating active regrowth later and that could all be done by hand with no power tools. We would like to still be able to do that just very carefully. With a very small footprint. You know, just a couple of guys going down there and doing a little bit of cutting, but. With that, we do want to be sensitive to the Vernal Pool and the Vernal Pool habitat and the critters that like to be in that area.
Thank you, sure.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Sullivan.
How many sonotube piers, if that's what you decide to do. Are required in order to support that bridge?
So my best guess right now, and 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 this is one of the things that we need to. We need to make sure we've got right. If we look at the plan, I think the engineer may have shown that if we could go back. Through the presentation to that slide, but if not, I think it would be four. No, he does not show, but I think I think we'd be looking at. For the the ends would essentially rest with the granite on the ground. I don't think we would need anything there, but we get up so that the the surface of the walkway is almost three feet above the path. In the center. In order to get that pitch, so we really need to support the middle. So it in picture, I picture sort of two about a third of the way and another two. At the at the final point there.
Yeah, so Alison, I just suggested they have a stamped plan by an engineer of how this walkway is supported. How many they need and, you know, they said there may be an alternative, but. We don't know what that is. We don't know what kind of work needs to be done, what kind of equipment needs to be brought in there. It's kind of open to me. The 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 other question I had is the outlet from this Vernal Pool area that goes into the pipe culvert that goes to Center Street. Is that clear now? And do you plan on doing any work in that vicinity to make sure that if it is partially blocked? By either stones or trees or whatever is there to clean that up?
We're certainly willing to. When I was last there, there was no significant obstruction, but I don't think the pipe. I think the pipe may be partially buried at the bottom, you know, third of it or or third to a half. And so the question is. I I would not want to get into digging the stream, what's formed a stream bed up. But certainly removing any kind of woody debris and we could work with you. And your staff on any any recommendations and work with the commission. While we're in there on making any improvements that. That allow that to function better, but I'd be hesitant to dig down into the channel because then we could get head cut erosion working its way back towards the Vernal Pool.
Oh, yeah, I understand. And I'm just asking the question whether you guys had come up with a decision. And the question always comes up, who who owns that area? You know, who's who's got responsibility? To make sure it drains. And I'm not sure who that answer is, that land I assume is. Owned by Sophia Longhouse, is that is that their backyard?
Yeah, that they they purchased it after the unsuccessful development attempt there. And, you know, certainly I would envision that that. You know, as part of just general maintenance, if they see that, you know, there's brush and debris that are over it. That can be easily cleaned up, they could they could be doing that. And if it was something bigger, they could coordinate with. With conservation and the city. On how to, you know, how to approach it if they notice something. You know, certainly with this and then with phase two. There'll be more regular eyes on that area than.
And so Alison, I just think about whether or not there should be a petrol maintenance condition where they notify staff. That this after storm, after whatever, there's something potentially blocking it. That being blocked, it simply floods them. And no one else, just floods the upland. So that's just a thought.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Do we have? If you permit, do we have? Information, Tom, on on the construction? Methodology as.
Yeah, that typically. If it's sonotubes, it's going to be. A small mini going in with an auger and and augering down for the for the sonotubes. We would be using a bobcat, I would imagine, for the and or possibly some work by hand for the. The stone dust at either end, but it would be fairly small. Equipment. And and then the. If it's if it's diamond piers, it's essentially picture a cinder block with three holes in it. That's basically folks with a sledgehammer installing those. But we'll need some small equipment to kind of do the do the the two ends. And we'll have erosion control in place. There's nothing, there's no significant excavation needed for for, you know, we're essentially evaluating. Iterations of what you see for a plan in front of you and and. And what we need to do is actually get more of a framing plan. For it and evaluate whether or not we could use the the diamond piers, which are must. Basically, there's no soil disturbance whatsoever with those, and that's our preference. But I wanted to show the sonotubes because it's much easier to come back to you with a plan. Change that removes sonotubes than if we find out we can't use diamond piers. You know, and then have to come back and say we've got something that we have to do is more aggressive. So what I would ask on that would just be that. You know, we have to give you a final plan for approval. For the walkway improvements, and that will also give us time. You know, to to get the the bids on it and and the. You know, the the final sort of construction design of it. And and in that process, coordinate with parks, because again, this is the the entry to to Allendale. And make sure that everybody likes how we're going forward with it and. And that it's consistent with what we're asking you to approve tonight.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan, are you done?
No, I gave up a couple of minutes ago.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Long, what do you have?
First off, wanting to thank Snowplace for all the work with Urban Wilds. And as well as Parter. So. I, you know, this is a great project that complements the work that Parks is doing. It's in line with what Paul and the Urban Wilds team is working on. And I know, I know you have a plan for this in place, I just didn't see it in the documents that were submitted. How will you ensure the success of the plantings? After two growing seasons? Especially in the case of a drought.
Right, so so as as Miles mentioned, they're going to be there. Sort of fostering the growth for the first two to three growing seasons. And we would certainly expect, and I believe in the draft order. There are monitoring conditions with reports to be submitted. And typically, you know, this is a fairly generic answer, but I think it's a good answer, which is typically, you know, we put in these plants with the best. Science and intentions behind what we put in, but that sometimes we put them in and we find that one species struggles and doesn't do well. And so if that happens, if it's a species wide issue. We swap out the species with another approved native, either something already on the list. Or we go back to to concom and say, can we substitute this? If it's just a single plant that has mortality because it frost heaves out of the ground or. Something like that, then we just replace it with the same. So it's a matter of proper monitoring and proper follow up. And the one thing I really like about Parter is is. They're not a landscape firm that just runs in, pops plants in the ground and throws down mulch and then drives away. They're going to follow up on this and be on top of it. And we would expect both. The contractor selection, the folks who are doing the work, but also the. The conditions in the order would be supportive of of requiring that kind of approach.
Excellent, thank you, Tom. That's the only question I had.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Herbs.
Just a couple of questions. One is I I see a number of property lines running through here, is is all the work on your property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there are, there is a CR on the a portion of the the trail, I believe.
Got it. And. I I have been, I thought on all the trails in. Allendale Woods, is this? Now or intended to be a public? Access place and so does it, let me just then.
Yeah.
It doesn't show this map on the Allendale Woods map, it doesn't. I'm not clear, does it connect to a path that goes further into the woods?
And actually Patty's with us tonight, I'll let her answer that because I've only walked in there a little bit and I wasn't aware it wasn't on the Allendale map. But what I will say is right now, it mainly serves as an access point to and from Sophia Snowplace. And our phase two application, which I think is going for a final council vote tomorrow with. With public funds is. The Community Preservation Act Fund is. I think that vote is tomorrow, but that will actually take this path and extend it at an accessible grade all the way down to this. Healing Garden that we're looking to install right at Center Street. So we will actually have a publicly accessible trailhead. There'll be an extension of a CR as part of that process. So. When we're done, not just this phase, but the next phase. Allendale Woods will be accessible to the public from Center Street.
And and I want to make clear, this is Patty Rogabin, and President CEO at Sophia Snowplace. What we're trying to do here is create. And you know, an accessible path for mobility challenged and other disabilities. Into the into the green areas. You know, both on our own private property, but also Allendale Woods as far as we can. That path goes directly to Spring House. But it also, you know, goes off in different directions. And I know a number of our residents who can do the walk. Have ma have made it into other sections of Allendale Woods as have a high. So yes, it does connect. And it's. It's not the most, it's not the one that's most used. But it is, we hope, going to be the most used by those folks that are not typically able to enter. The area because of their own challenges with respect to mobility, eyesight. And other issues.
Thank you for that, and and maybe it's just a question actually for Commissioner Long. I I was wondering about it becoming a busy path near the Vernal Pool, but it sounds like this is something that you're working on with them together, so. Not a cause for concern.
No, and. It, I don't think it's on the trail map, probably because of when the capital project happened for Allendale Woods. It probably was at a different stage than the capital projects and Allendale Woods, you might know is, yeah, that smattering of. Conservation Commission owned land and then the private CRs. So it's really a patchwork.
Okay, thanks, so no more questions for me.
And Commissioner Herbs is part of the CPA grant on that committee, as you know. So we're happy to award for the phase two of this project and there is a time limit. The money has to be used fairly quickly, so I would expect to see phase two come imminently after this. Okay. One question I did have, last time I was over there, I did run into a rather large dumpster farm. And I don't remember if it was the Sophia Snow property or another property, is that your property that? Has, I seem to remember like eight or ten dumpsters out there.
We had a project over the winter for about eight or nine months. Where we replaced the entire HVAC system in the building to become in compliance with. Boston standards for twenty twenty five. And so those are now gone, thank goodness, project's over, but yeah, that's what that was about.
Okay, understood, thank you. Okay, Allison, anyone from the public?
Yes, we have two hands raised, the first is Yvonne.
Oh, thank you, thank you for taking my testimony. I had a question that I put in chat. How many trees, how many mature trees are planning to be removed? Oh, quote unquote, removed because they're going to be killed. You don't remove trees, you kill them. Trees are not things, they are living beings. And when you remove them, you remove the wildlife that is in them. And that's essentially what you will be doing by removing trees. I would, I want to recommend that instead of. Making plans for paths that are straight and that cut into the area that trees cover. That you go around the trees, I don't know why you ever, you always have to do. But you, in general, generally, improvement projects always involve. Straight lines. And and that in in essence ignores the nature of nature. Nature is not in straight lines, it's fractal. And if we want to improve nature, then we should go along with it and not disturb it. My second.
Yvonne, let's let's let them answer your first question about the trees and then let's get to your second question.
Yeah, but first of all, I'd like you to look at the image behind me, that is not a straight path and that's the kind of thing I like to do. So your your comment is well noted. We we are not changing the footprint of an, there's an existing path, we're just looking at changing the slope of it. So we will not be impacting any trees with that path work. The tree removal that we're talking about is entirely related to invasive species control. And invasive species removal, we are trying to leave some. Trees in place as snags, which means they will be dead but standing. And they will remain as habitat while we replace them with. Native species that will be more resilient. And that will not have a liliopathic properties as many of the invasive trees do. And those properties essentially prevent the growth of an understory. And if you look in that area, all we have are invasive understory. There's a couple of skunk cabbage, but other than that, there's not much herbaceous. Plants and we'll be able to establish. A population of ferns and other. Other herbaceous plants, a better shrub layer and a more diverse tree layer. So while there will be. You know, killing of of Norway maples and there's a large cork tree. Those are very aggressive invasive plants that prevent growth of a diverse. You know, sort of, they they prevent the area from being as biodiverse as as I think the Vernal Pool deserves to have in its buffer. So what we are trying to do is improve habitat. We are not removing trees for any. Benefit in terms of a development or anything like that, we're trying to actually recover the ecology of the area and that's the whole purpose of the project.
Great, thank you, Yvonne, what was your second question?
Oh, my second question was, oh, good, I had it here. Yes. Oh, yes, this idea that when you plant new trees, you're into the savings of an account or something. I heard that. That metaphor mentioned that is in savings, but I want to remind this architects that. You know, if you invest in the stock mark, the stock market and the stock market fails and drops and crashes. Then you lose all your savings and this is the situation in which we are right now. Our environment is changing and becoming a in, you know, we have global warming and we have climate change. Accosting us, it's happening faster than we can think of. To plant new trees thinking that they're going to survive. And replace old trees is a. It's a chimera, I don't know how to say it in English.
No, that was good, yeah.
Yes.
Understood, yeah, that was perfect.
Start thinking about that way and I'm I'm very much against, you know, calling trees, any kind of trees invasive. That's nature. And we should just walk around, work around them. They are, they are part of our environment. And to really to cut a mature tree to release carbon. Into the air is a a death sentence to us and to our future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and Yvonne, I just want to explain the eradication of invasives, invasives. They squeeze out wetlands, they're actually bad for wetlands resource areas. So there's there's definitely a trade off there and a dilemma, so, but thank you for your comments. Who else do we have? So there's, there's definitely a, um, trade-off there and a dilemma. So, but thank you for your comments. Um, who else do we have?
We have George Marsh, oh Patty.
Yeah, can I just add to Yvonne? I'm, I'm really excited that you might attend when we do this kind of hearing for phase two. We're transferring what was a, uh, a, a, uh, gas station lot into, um, a, a climate sensitive um, area that's going to actually contribute, uh, more than take away. And, um, I think that yours, you know, your, your, your feelings are feelings we share. Uh, we do want to handle the invasives, but when we come back with phase two of this, you'll see that we'll be planting numbers of trees, removing nothing and adding, um, only positives to, you know, what we consider to be climate sensitive, you know, uh, uh, strategies. So, uh, again, we'll hope, hopefully have you, um, at that, you know, next time, phase two, and we'll all be on the same page.
Thank you, Patty. Uh, I think we're moving on to George.
Yes, hello again. Um, I'm probably more familiar with this particular property and specifically the outlet of the Vernal Pool than probably anyone else on this call, Tom Hughes included. Uh, I live in the neighborhood. Uh, my, uh, former mother-in-law was a longtime resident of Sophia Snow Place. I have done volunteer work over there, landscaping work. I've, um, I know Paul, um, and I'm familiar with Parterre's previous work, uh, restoring around the Vernal Pool, which I am very complimentary of and, um, want to give them kudos for that. So, and I've met several of their workers in the past. Um, and I've seen the work that they've done around the Rosendale Wetlands. I believe that's them as well. And so I'm very familiar with their work and, and certainly supportive of their, their expertise. My concerns, um, are also along the lines of Yvonne just expressed by cutting very mature trees. I mean, there are some very huge, uh, they're non-native trees on this parcel, which I've been aware of for at least the last 15 years. Um, they haven't been managed by either of the land, the previous landowners on either side of the brook. And, uh, but they do provide a very substantial tree shade canopy, uh, which helps cool the, the wa- the outlet waters from the Vernal Pool. Also helps cool the water in the Vernal Pool, which is a, a very much, uh, beneficial aspect. And once these trees are killed, removed, they are going to allow in a lot more sunlight that's going to warm up the, the water in the Vernal Pool as well as the outlet stream. And I think that's an issue that the commission should consider in its deliberations. And I haven't heard anyone of the proponents talking about these, these, this aspect. There was a lot of focus in this hearing just now on the, the, uh, improvement to the trail section, which I'm also very familiar with. Uh, but that is much further away from the Vernal Pool. Uh, I, I think the impacts of that are insignificant compared to what's going to happen when these trees are removed uh, along the outlet stream. And I also am very familiar with the trail system all, all throughout Allen Dale Woods as well as uh, coming in from the, uh, Sophia Snow Property and that trail that they are intending to improve. And I'm certainly an applaud of their efforts to do that in the future. Um, opening up access from Center Street to the public. Uh, that trail is going, goes from Sophia Snow Place directly to the edge of the Spring House Senior Development up above on the hill. There is no direct access or existing improved trail to the Allen Dale Woods itself from that property. So I think it's a little disingenuous to be talking about improving access when in fact there is not, uh, accessible access currently onto Allen Dale Woods from that trail. It goes directly from Sophia Snow Place Private Property to the Spring House Private Property. So I think the commission needs to be aware of that and, you know, I know the situation back there. Like I said, I've been going back there now for 15 years. And, you know, I'm very familiar with the, everything that's going on on the ground with previous, um, uh, Director of Sophia Snow Place. I know Patty personally as well. She knows me. I've offered to, uh, meet with her and, uh, her consultants about the tree work. Uh, that never happened. And so, and I've just read the report. I've just note, read the notice of intent very carefully as well as Parterre's proposal. And I still have some concerns and questions about some of the details of it. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, George. Um, Tom, did you want to briefly speak to the, um, impacts of the tree removal on the Vernal Pool?
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, if you look at what we've proposed for, for replanting, we're using two-inch caliper trees, which, um, and we're using a significant number of them. So along with the, the shrub layer that we'd be putting in, we'll be, uh, providing, uh, equivalent, if not, uh, denser canopy pretty quickly. The, um, uh, there will certainly be a loss of canopy with the larger invasive trees. Um, one of the things with Norways is they have such a, a dense invade, you know, dense, uh, leaf layer and they leaf out early is that they shade out and block the growth of a lot of native, uh, understory plants. So, um, the one benefit, because we're at the outlet area, is the effects of the loss of canopy are going to be more felt on the, um, on the stream that's flowing away from the Vernal Pool than on the Vernal Pool itself. The Vernal Pool itself has some fringe canopy along the edge, um, and, and the, the catchment, the watershed that flows into the Vernal Pool has a, has a fairly dense canopy and we're not touching, uh, the areas that are, that are flowing into it. So, you know, we're cognizant of that concern and we've tried to be careful in how we've designed this to try to have, uh, you know, really minimize any adverse effects and really maximize the biodiversity, what we're putting in there and the quantity of the trees and all that. And overall, create an improvement in the ecology of the area and an improvement in the, um, ecology and the, and the Vernal Pool habitat of this section. So that's.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, anyone else, Allison?
I'm not seeing any other hands.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing, uh, with the addition of a special condition to the order of conditions regarding, uh, requirement of stamp plans of the final, um, method of construction of the, um, of the path. I guess we're talking about sonotubes versus diamond piers?
Yeah.
Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries four nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you're welcome. See you at phase two. Uh, there have also been a number of continuances continued to the April 19th hearing. Is notice of intent for DEP file number 0061772 and Boston file number 2021-010. Notice continued, uh, notice of intent for DEP file number 0061704 and Boston file number 2020-007. Notice of intent for DEP file number 0061820 and Boston file number 2021-045. Also continued as a, um, request for a determination of applicability, uh, regarding the property located at Two Starling and 34 and 36 Willett Streets in West Roxbury. We have an, uh, commission will now begin its regular meeting. We have a number of, uh, continuances there as well. Continued has been a request for a certificate of compliance, uh, for DEP file number 00601, no, yeah, 006 dash 1613, uh, request for.
Um, I think 006, uh, 1613 is not a continuance. The other three are.
Okay.
I think.
Um, so, so for that one, staff for, uh, performed a site visit on Wednesday, April 5th, 2023. The site was clear and all conditions appeared to have been met. Staff recommend issuing the certificate of compliance.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, so with that, I'd, uh, entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 006-1613.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Uh, so Allison, I have three more. They're all continued?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, okay, so, um, continued is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 0061558. Uh, DEP file number 0061867 and Boston file number 2022-026. And DEP file number, uh, 006-1855 and Boston file number 2022-017. Um, next item on the agenda are administrative updates.
Uh, no updates other than the vote that is next on the hearing.
Fantastic. Okay. I have next item on the agenda is acceptance of the following orders and conditions.
It is upcoming on the hearing, excuse me.
Upcoming, okay. Um, so, um, let me look over these real quickly. I don't think we have any recusals. Nope. Okay, so, um, I would entertain a motion to accept the following orders and conditions. Notice of intent for DEP file number 0061891 and Boston file 2022-046. DEP file number 0061923 and Boston file number 2023-010. Um, and DEP file number 0061922 and Boston file number 2023-015. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Great. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
I vote aye, carries four nothing. Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion and vote to designate, uh, Elena. And, um, the name is, um, uh, obscured on my copy here, so I apologize.
Uh, Elena Ittumari.
Okay, thank you. Elena Ittumari, uh, as the commission's agent. Uh, any, any flavor to this, Allison, other than a big sigh of relief?
Well, I am very pleased, uh, to note that this is both Elena's first hearing and first day, uh, with the city. Uh, she was recently hired in the Environment Department as the Executive Director and, uh, would uh, recommend that the commission designate her as the agent.
Fantastic. Any questions from any of the commissioners?
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you so much. I'm happy to be here.
Abs- that's great. Uh, happy to have you. Um, so with that, I would entertain a motion to appoint, uh, Elena Ittumari as the commission's agent.
So moved.
We have a second?
Seconded.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries three nothing. Welcome and thank you. Um, last item on the agenda is acceptance of meeting minutes from March 15th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Um, great, uh, motion to adjourn by acclamation. Actually, I should say before we go, Allison, uh, thank you so much. I know we're still going to be seeing you, but, um, everything you did was so far above and beyond, uh, the call of duty. And I know you've worked three or four jobs and you must be exhausted and, um, catch up on some rest and, uh, we'll see you soon.
Uh, thank you very much, Chair. I really appreciate all of your, the commission's help, uh, during this time as well.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to adjourn? Any objections?
None.
Okay, go. Thank you. Good night. See you in a few.
Night, doll.
Good night, doll.
Good night.